Good evening and welcome to the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education Work Session for August 10, 2021. I'm Shay Woodbury, Chair of the School Board. I'm going to officially call our work session meeting to order. Actually, all members are present tonight, and so it's good to see everybody back in one space. And we don't have the dividers, but we do have our masks on. So that's a good thing. We are going to move to the approval of our agenda tonight. Is there a motion?
Second.
If there are no further question or discussion, let it be known by aye for approval.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next session, the next item on our agenda is the Finance Committee. And I'll turn that over to Chairperson Bremer.
Hi, welcome everyone. We are going to start with the Project Impact Pre-K Funding with Andrea Gillis.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Chair Woodbury, Vice Chair Cavett-Hayson, Board Members, welcome back. So I wanted to review the pre-K expenses for 2021 for our pre-K classes. So in the prior year, we had about 2.2 million from Head Start, 1.9 million from NC Pre-K Funds, 1.7 million from Project Impact, and 1.7 million for Title I duly enrolled students, for a total of $5.5 million for our pre-K expenses. So for 2021, Project Impact Funds will be lower. Project Impact Funds were not intended to serve as a sustainable pre-K funding source, so we have recently discovered that the funding level will not be the same for 2021. So they are allowing us to use about $730,000 of carryover from other Project Impact grants to help fund the pre-K program for 2022. But they will not provide any additional funds for 2022. We can use $125,000 of Title I carryover that we have for our duly enrolled students to offset the shortfall. And then we want to recommend, staff will recommend that we use $600,000 of fund balance to sustain that program for fiscal year 2022. And for next fiscal year 2223 and future years, we'll be looking for an alternative funding source to fund our pre-K programs.
Does anyone have any questions?
I do.
Yes.
So talk to me a little bit about, has something changed with Project Impact?
Well, due to the pandemic, I think maybe some of the funding, you know.
So hard to get funding?
Yes, hard to get funding.
But they haven't said, you know, maybe down the road, we're raising money and then we can...
Yes, the door is not completely closed, no. It's just that because of the pandemic, I think their funding, you know, has been a little less than they anticipated due to the pandemic.
Okay. And then I have a question with the $600,000 from the fund balance. That's not a, you know, it feels like we need to look towards sustainable sources, but what about the ESSER funds? Could we not use that for this emergency need for the pre-K?
I think we did talk to, Kelly wants to come forward. I think we did talk to DPI to see if that was an option. And I think they said that our Title I carryover of the 425 was pretty much our first option. And I'll let her speak too. Yes, sir.
So we can use ESSER funds, however, you have to follow the Title I requirements. So Title I requirements are different than what we have in our other programs. So requirements for Title I is actually education-based. It is not on income. So we did look at that as an option, and that's why it's noted as duly eligible. So we looked to see what is, what programs are students eligible for to maximize funding? And this is the maximum of which we have in carryover. So we can't shift, there's nothing else from ESSER that would be applicable here.
Unless we change how we screen our pre-K kids, like we couldn't serve those same kids because Title I is based on educational need, whereas some of the other funding is based on financial need. So we wouldn't be able to serve those same kids if we wanted to use all ESSER funds.
Because of that component?
Because of that component.
With that Title I piece?
Yeah, the screening portion.
Okay. I had the same question as Board Member Crowley.
So it takes into account the fact that you may make enough money, but you have needs to put you into the pre-K.
Yeah, Title I is based on educational need, not financial need. Whereas NC Pre-K, I think, is based on financial need. And so we would have to, like, the kids that were previously serving with Project Impact Funds, of that, we can only use $425,000 because those students were duly eligible based on their need. So that's why the remaining $600,000 is for those kids that are eligible based on financial need and not educational need.
It'd be a total of $1 million together.
Yes.
Ms. Gillis, when did we find out that there would be this shortfall of funding for pre-K?
Well, I think Ms. McManus and I found out not long ago. I think there may have been talk before, but we were not aware.
Do we want our Executive Director, do you want to come up, Dr. Wilkins?
Just so I can just generally, I just want to understand the sort of process for like how we got, you know, because it seems like we're about to start the new school year, and we have this shortfall, and it's kind of a surprise, not getting enough money.
So I'm just going to kind of take us back from the original inception from Project Impact. It was initially intended to start as seed funding for the classrooms, as well as for the upfitting for the licensure requirements for the classrooms. It was always stated it was not a sustainability funding source. However, I think we've had lots of transitions in the process, and I think over time, some of that got lost. And so I started July 1, and that was a really, really deep conversation with the board that we had to say, okay, so where are we moving forward? And so Project Impact is working on its strategic plan. It's not a no on pre-K funding. It's a, we're not a current sustainable source for pre-K funding. And so one of the things that Superintendent McManus asked is can we use this as a stopgap as we work on our transition, our sustainability plan to move forward? And so that decision was made on July 14. It was officially made. There were discussions prior to that, but again, with all the transitions, that was more recent. You're welcome.
So just to stay up for a few more minutes, it's my understanding that Project Impact definitely doesn't intend to continue to fund pre-K. They, from my understanding, they want the school district to figure out the budgeting for pre-K.
So it's not that they want support in funding for pre-K. It's not going to be a sole source for continuation as a sustainable source. So for instance, as we move forward with the strategic plan, if there are a number of schools involved, they may support as a match to support the school system, but it will never be self-funding. That is clear in the decision.
So we don't, we can't, we cannot use any Title I funds, or can we use some, right? Is that what I heard you say?
We are using $425,000 in Title I, in additional Title I funds.
Okay.
Yes. Well, let me go back to the previous slide, hold on.
Okay, so we are, we will use to our max of what we can.
Right, we already have about 1.7 in Title I funds. We're going to use an additional 425 more for those duly eligible students.
Okay.
Because Title I funds are based on how many kids are eligible, I mean, how they're eligible. They have to be eligible based on educational need. So we have that many students in our pre-K students that are based on educational need that we'll pay for out of title, title of Title I funds.
Okay.
But the remaining students are based on financial need, and that's where we come in with the fund balance.
All right. And so, and Paula, you may know the answer to this one, I'm sorry. Pre-K priority, it's my understanding, you know, I know that group is repping, working, and I know Superintendent McManus, you're a part of that group, and you as well, I think, Shay. So do we possibly see as a future source, if pre-K priority goes through, that that will help us with, or Nicolette, you're a part of that group too. So do we see, I'm just wondering if that, down the road, if that will be an answer to some funding or whatever.
We hope so. And then to the answer to the previous question, we found out about March about the shortage. As Paula mentioned, that we've been having some changing staffing of who was here prior to, and did not realize that the funding would run off this year. But pre-K priority is really looking for some sustainable funding because the idea is universal pre-K. The funding that we're asking for now covers about 800 students, all of the different funding sources, but we know there are so many more students in the community that are eligible and could benefit from pre-K. So hopefully, that is something that pre-K priority is looking into, what other sources are there, the universal pre-K.
Chairman Crowley?
Yes, so for $5 million for pre-K, is that for five days a week? Is it, is it, what's the, is it the full debt school day?
Yes, it's a full school day.
Okay, so did we look at an option where we do three days a week, or five half-days a week? Something that would cut the cost, but we would still be offering preschool, but we wouldn't have to take 600 out of fund balance.
No, I mean, we have not looked at a modified option. I mean, Nicolette, you can respond, but due to the importance of pre-K, we're looking at a five-day-a-week program. We have not considered a different option. Did you want to respond anything more?
Yeah, just absolutely. The students that are identified for pre-K are the students who have the greatest academic needs, so those are the students that need to be in school five days a week for the most amount of time. So that would not be a recommendation that we would make for those students.
And Board Member Crowley, I think from a half-day standpoint, at least my understanding, we had had that question before with pre-K priority. They have to have the standards of a five-star center, and in order to do that, no half-day program, that just puts any half-day program off the table.
That's good.
So I share your angst. I think you could get two, two half-day programs in there five days a week, but the way that it's set up right now, that they don't allow it simply because of the certification.
And one more thing, the reason we're asking for a fund balance here is as we've talked about the use of fund balance, and that is, it is for basically emergency-type situations, this is that, because we don't want to close down any of our pre-K classrooms this fall. I mean, we really need our students to be in school, so that's why we're proposing this. That is our only funding source right now that we have that would qualify to meet this need.
My understanding, though, is emergency and a one-time-use thing, so it concerns whether or not...
Correct. That's why we're, that's why over the next, honestly, three to six months, we will be figuring out what this looks like. I know there's conversations at the state level also about enhancing pre-K, so we're going to be doing a lot of meeting. We are part of the pre-K priority to figure out how we're going to move forward after this school year. So this is kind of an emergency, one-time expense, so that we don't have to close classrooms down this school year.
Can we put this like somewhere on the, like an update on the funding situation, maybe in like three months or so, so we can see if, what options we are starting to look at?
Yes.
That would be helpful, thank you. And can you, I know, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but can you update everybody really quickly, has the budget been passed?
No, the state budget has not been passed yet. Right now, the Senate, I believe, the Senate budget has, is going through, correct me if I'm wrong, Dionne, but the Senate budget has gone through. And now I think the next step is to go to the committee, the joint committee. So hopefully, we'll be hearing something soon.
Thank you.
Ms. Gillis, so just to clarify, because I thought that you mentioned at the beginning that, so this is, this is sort of a one-time thing, and that you would be looking for a sustainable, for a funding source? Okay. Then the second question is, are we still at the 6.9 million balance in our fund balance? Is that...
That is the fund balance as of June 30 of 2020. We, you know, we have closed our books this year, but we're still waiting for our audit to be done, so I anticipate a couple more million will be added to the fund balance.
Okay. And while we're sort of on it, because we talk about spending, things of that nature, sort of what we're planning for, there are additional, there were some additional expenses that you, you made us aware of that you feel like would need to come out of the fund balance?
Yes, the new computer system, the ERP system. The good news is that in the state budget, and I think it's still in there, there is funding for statewide system modernization that we would get our portion, that the state would help fund that, but we still would need maybe 2 to 2.5, 2 to 2.5 million out of fund balance in order to help get the whole project done over the next two years.
Okay.
So it's probably a $4.5 million total cost, but we're hoping to get two from the state. And that's in the budget right now, it stands, but has not passed yet. But we won't, we're not going to move forward until we know what the state budget is.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Ms. Gillis. We can move on to the action item, and what we have is the approval of this pre-K funding. Do I have a...
A motion? Yes, I'll make a motion. Second.
The members are me, Leah Crowley, Dana Cottle-Jones, Elizabeth Mottinger, and Alex Bohannon. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous? Nope, no's? Okay, it was unanimous. Then I'll just close this finance and move on to Buildings and Grounds.
Okay, so we have quite a few items for Buildings and Grounds tonight. First, we'll have some conversation around a cell tower at North Forsyth.
Thank you. Yep, I got that one. I think I got the first couple of them, so thank you, Madam Chair. I'll see if I can adjust that microphone a little bit. Okay, is that better? Does that sound like you can hear me a little bit better? It's hard to yell now. So as you remember, in June, we came to you, we were approached by a company out of Chattanooga, Tennessee called Vogue Towers, and incidentally, we do have Pat Tant and Janet Gill with Vogue Towers here tonight, so if you have any questions that I'm not capable of answering, which are pretty readily available, so you can, they'll be glad to answer any questions you may have. But we were approached by them, and so I approached, I brought it to you in June about the possibility of a cell tower, a revenue-generating cell tower on the North Forsyth property. So we've done a little investigation, they've made a couple of site visits, and then they, we have included in your packet tonight some information about what that lease would look like. We also have a copy of the lease that's currently being reviewed with legal, and we're not asking for approval of that lease tonight, but instead, we would have you a lease available by the board meeting on the 24th. But just some overhead pieces of what this request looks like, it's about a 55 by 55 area that you would access from Saddle Line Drive, and I think, get to the, there it is. So this, as you can see on the screen, this is located about 200 feet west of the North Forsyth entrance on Saddle Line Drive. Pretty heavily wooded, we selected this site because we don't really see any need for development in this area for quite a while. This is going down toward, toward the soccer fields. As you know, there's a fairly large piece of property that we own in North Forsyth property. It will be accessed by a road from Saddle Line Drive that they would make the application for, they would do all the permitting, go through the rezoning, that whole piece. So what Vogue Towers has asked for is basically an option for a 12-month due diligence, which they'll pay us $1,000 for, and if it doesn't, if we don't quite get there in a year, they've asked the possibility of renewing it. So once we get through the zoning and the permitting process, and it's not just a City Winston-Salem thing, it's a thing I think would go through some federal agencies as well. And once the lease starts, it'll be $1,000 a month for five years, and then it's renewable for five terms. So it's basically amounts to about a 30-year lease. And additionally, once the first carrier goes onto the tower, we'll get a $10,000 payment. So that's kind of summarized in the information that you have. I also have in your, in your packet, just a couple photos that, that I can't seem to get to. These are a couple towers, they've actually got some towers that they have around the country that are basically light stadium light poles. They'll take the light pole out, put the tower in, the light will go on top of it. What you see on the bottom picture with the green crane is basically the tower that we would have. Probably can figure out, I'll zoom into that a little bit closer if you'd like to look. So it's not the, it's not the cell tower of old where you've got a steel structure going up and these guy wires that come off. This is a pretty simple, pretty simple installation. As far as the funding piece, as I mentioned, the revenue that will be generated, what we, as staff, had discussed was if the school that's going to have the cell tower is a Title I school, which North Forsyth is, 100% of the revenue would go to the school. And then our second recommendation is if it's not a Title I school, and we're just, we're trying to look broadly in case we're approached again about something, because we, I will, I will say, Vogue has asked about a couple other properties as well, where there seems to be some, some weak cell service. And I think if anybody's been in the New Lewisville Middle School, you'll know there's weak cell service. So we want to kind of not give opportunities to maybe schools that would not have the opportunity for that. So we had proposed that if it's a non-Title I school, 50% of that revenue would go to the school, and then 50% would come back for the board to decide where they want that money to go. So that's, that's kind of what we were planning to talk about in a nutshell. Is there any, any questions I can answer, or I can direct to Vogue?
I just have a comment, and, you know, really to ask the fellow committee members. I like the idea of 100% of the money going to the school if it's a Title I school, but I think it's so that we can have a policy and really maybe review what we're doing with additional funds that are coming in and how we're doing it, instead of us just approving that and building in grounds, maybe we approve the beginning of the due diligence to enter into the, to the contract, but to put the funding piece, as far as setting a policy around that, to the policy committee. Because I think there probably are other things, if we really looked at in the district, that we may receive revenue from, and how, how do we distribute that? And wouldn't it be good to just have something that's kind of across the board, and not just kind of hodgepodge, you know?
Are you thinking like General Assembly or Congress go through like a finance slash policy committee, and before, it goes before the full board, so it would rotate through?
Right, right, just, just that funding piece, not the, you know, not the contract, but then that way, we can align that. Because I think we also have questions, I know Board Member Crowley and I have asked a couple times, like, did we nail down the streaming revenue, and how was that paid to the schools, and do we do something different with that? So I think there's some things that are floating out there, and it might be good for that to go through there. Just when we get to the maybe action piece.
And I kind of thought about back this past year, when we had the virtual school, and we had trouble with service getting, you know, actual coverage. Is it possible that some of the, like this tower, it's kind of north of an area, that can be, could use some additional services? If we're providing hotspots, can we also provide it from the cell?
So I don't know if you...
That would be a Kevin question, probably.
It may look kind of toward Kevin and toward the Vogue folks as well. One thing I didn't mention was that they are going to allow, there's space on the tower that they give for EMS. They will allow EMS to put stuff on, on these towers for no charge. That's just a collaboration effort they have with the counties they're working in. But we can, we can certainly address that, take your question, I can get a little bit more detail from you, and see if I can have some, get some answers for you on that.
Okay, because I know that there are people that have at need at home and don't have internet at home, and with more and more of our things, like this year, athletics is now online, we fill out paperwork online. So if they don't have online, they are missing the service. It would be nice to have some kind of way, or, I mean, it could still be firewalled, monitored, and only used for school purposes.
Good.
So that would be a question for the company.
We'll discuss that and kind of get you an answer back on that. You may notice when you're going down Saddle Line Drive, we were standing in the driveway at North Forsyth. You'll stand in the driveway, and you can see a cell tower on the left side of Saddle Line Drive, and then another one on the right. And I asked about that, and the way they've described it, it's kind of like a, it's kind of like a shopping center, but it's a, it's a vertical shopping center. They're just leasing space, and it's just, it's a capacity issue. There's so many devices, and so it doesn't really matter how close the tower is, it's the capacity that that tower has, and it's just, we're not going to start, stop using devices.
Right. Sure.
Any other questions? Go ahead. Roll into the next item.
Right, keep us going.
So our next item is an easement that is part, again, part of our policy, whenever we have a permanent easement for anything, we bring it to the board for approval. So as part of the Lewisville Middle School construction, we're doing a very minimal widening to Lewisville Vianna School, I'm sorry, Lewisville Vianna Road. As you're, part of the property, obviously, is where our driveway is, so part of that project would require that Duke Power relocate a couple power poles, and this is a minimal easement to Duke Power to allow them to do that. But our policy does require that any permanent easement is approved by the board.
Any questions, Colan, on that one? No? Okay, great.
All right, thank you.
So now Lauren Richards will come and talk to us about two-thirds bond funds to use for roof replacements.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Ms. McManus. Good to be here with you this evening. So I have a couple items as well, so we'll try to keep them rolling. So the first item up is talking about requests for two-thirds bond funds to be used for roof replacements. Our staff has completed the project list for the 2018-2020 two-thirds bond funds, and you may recall that in April, we came to you for a new request list for the 2020-22 money. That timeline looks a little funny, because it's 2021, sounds 2020, 2022. So that money comes in a little bit late. So that is a separate project list that is now underway, and those projects are being bid out, and will be taken care of shortly. And so, once we finish a project list from those two-thirds bonds, we go back and we look to see if there are any funds available in savings, okay, to those projects that can be utilized for the purposes of doing other facility repairs that are still on our list. We know we have millions of dollars of facility needs that are still there, that we are always trying to be able to move forward and complete. And so staff looks at work order history, we look at any kind of emergencies that may have come up, some, a system that has recently failed that we weren't expecting to fail, we look at life cycle replacements, if things have a 10, 20, or 30-year life cycle, where they are in that process to look at those. And so as you know, roofs are a pretty major repair, they protect, excuse me, protect our building envelope, and if we don't repair things like that, we can look at much other bigger significant problems that cost us a lot more money down the road. A lot of our older roofs were warranted for 10 years, okay? And so at the time that we were looking at these, we didn't necessarily have a lot of funds available, and so you could save money by warranting a roof for 10 years instead of 20 or 30 years. And we have a great internal staff that is able to continuously patch and do repairs, and we stretch the life of those roofs as long as we possibly can. And so in looking at that, the next two roofs that are up for replacement are a portion of North Forsyth High School and a portion of Reynolds High School. So as you know, Colan and his team are currently undergoing a renovation at North. There are portions of that building that are not being touched in that renovation. That roof is 35 years old, and so these sections would be covered through this project so that we can protect that entire facility. We did do a roof assessment throughout the entire district in 2019, and that is available if you'd like to see that. And in that project list, or sorry, that assessment list, North Forsyth was the roof that was in the worst condition in the district. The other roof that we're looking at is the competition gym and the auxiliary gym at Reynolds High School. You can see, this is a picture of the auxiliary gym roof at Reynolds. There has been damage there. Staff does go in, they do the patching of the roof, they come internally, they patch the drywall, the sheet rock, all those different pieces, and try to mitigate that problem. But we're to a point where staff really recommends that we stop mitigating that problem, and we fix that problem. Any questions about those roof repairs this evening and the use of those funds?
Yeah, so you said it's the two-thirds, it's not really the two-thirds bond, it's the two-thirds bond savings?
Yes, so when we bring a capital project list to you, we, we share with you that entire list and an estimated dollar amount for each of those projects based on previous engineering designs and projections, inflation in the market, all those different pieces. And so if we budget a project at $850,000, and the bids come in on that project, and it's a competitive market, materials are good, that bid may come in at $750,000. So there's a $100,000 that did not get used for the purposes of that project, and that money is still sitting there so that we can capture additional projects and progress the work forward.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for Lauren on that? Okay.
Thank you. All right, so I'll roll into the next item. The next topic up is ESSER funds, project approval. And so we've done some extensive presentations for the board around the use of the ESSER funds that we've received for this school year. And so about $26 million was requested and allocated in the ESSER plan to improve indoor air quality. And so what staff has done, as again we always do, is we go through and we take a look at all of our systems. For this, it's specific to our HVAC systems that provide that indoor air quality, and we have done an assessment of the needs throughout the district to try to provide those improvements. Excuse me. And so this evening, one of the PDFs that you have in your board packet this evening is the recommended project list. That list is listed out in the order that we would like to tackle those projects. One thing I do want to point out about that list is, even though that is the order that we would tackle those projects, because of the intricacies in the various types of projects, some of those may be able to be designed quicker, they may be able to be bid quicker, and they also may be able to be installed quicker. So you may not see them completed in that order, but that is the order in which we will attempt to address them. And so our recommendation is that, just as we do with the capital projects, that the board move forward this evening with approving that master list of projects so that we can begin the RFQ process to do the design work for those, for that equipment, and also then release those bids, because we have other districts around us that are doing the exact same thing. Because we have other districts around us that are doing the exact same thing. And the market is very, very tight right now. And so, by being able to move this list forward, we can go ahead and we can release an RFQ and potentially get a lot of different qualified engineering firms to support us so that we can try to get these projects in the first year tackled as quick as we can. It will take us a good part of this year and into the following year and possibly even to the third year to do some of this work. And so, just as kind of a reminder for these funds, these are federal funds. Typically, what we're dealing with in capital funds is our local funds. And so, Kelly Hales is here this evening for some other things, but I reference her because she is kind of the queen of federal procurement. I dabbled in a little bit of that when I was in child nutrition, but she is very, very well-versed on the uniform purchasing guidelines for these funds. And there are a lot of rules around submitting your RFQs and doing your bids. And so, as we do those projects, we can bring back to you the list of those firms that did the design work and the firms, excuse me, the companies that did the work so that you can see those lists. But we'd like to approve the entire list so we can move forward this evening. Any questions about those projects?
Lauren, is there any implications around this Senate Bill 450 dealing with carbon monoxide detectors that could possibly require all North Carolina schools to have these detectors installed? Do you know anything about this?
I do not know all the details about it. We have gotten some briefings and some updates, but I would not be prepared to answer you and provide you any feedback this evening.
Because I wonder if, I don't know where this bill is, but I wonder if it's required and become law, would we have enough money out of our ESSER dollars to have to deal with this in addition to the ESSER dollars you're seeking tonight?
And if we needed to do an assessment, that may be something we would look into. And we would certainly work with Kelly to see if those things correlated. The ESSER dollars are very, very specific to addressing indoor air quality. You know, it's not about HVAC life cycle replacements or HVAC modernization systems and things of that nature. So we would just really need to make sure that it really tied into what those allowable purchases are with the ESSER dollars.
Ms. Mott-Singer?
Yeah, thank you so much. What are we doing to ensure air quality until these projects are done? So how are we increasing ventilation in the schools that are on that list?
Sure.
Or, and all schools?
Sure. So, one of the first things we tackled last year was moving forward the bipolar ionization to support that indoor air quality. We started with our schools that we knew had older systems and did not have as well-built and designed systems that needed the attention. And then, from there, we've also been increasing the rate at which we're changing the air filters in our schools. That is an additional section of the ESSER funds as well to be able to purchase those additional filters so that we can increase that turnover in that rate. We are also looking at, in the schools that maybe do not have those newer systems, running the air systems longer or running them 24/7 to keep that airflow going and really trying to monitor all those things. We've been working with different contractors to really kind of keep a handle on our repairs. Supplies are challenging. And so, we're kind of working through making sure that when we look at our work order system, while we have different levels of work orders for like routine, urgent, we're kind of prioritizing all HVAC work orders as urgent right now over everything else to kind of keep those systems working. Certainly a challenge.
And what about things like opening windows or keeping ventilation going well?
So, there's a number of different things that kind of come and play there. So, if you have systems that are running and operating well and you open windows and it's a 90-degree day, you're adding humidity into that space, you're making that system work harder, which ultimately can cause that system to malfunction, to need additional repairs, which can cause more issues. It can also cause moisture issues. There's also the added security concern. If you're in an elementary school and you're on the main level, anytime those windows are open, you're adding a place where somebody could breach that property very easily and we would not want to support that. So it's a very delicate balance.
And can we use ESSER dollars for things like picnic tables so kids can eat outside or increase spaces for lunch and...
I do believe that there, yes, I do believe, there are a number of schools that have talked to senior team about outdoor classroom spaces, being able to go outdoors more often, that are looking at some different picnic tables and eating spaces outdoors so that the students can still spread out and get some of that fresh air. And I do believe that that...
That is, Lauren, it is in our ESSER plan.
Yeah, okay.
There's a line item for that.
Thank you. I was going to kind of look to Kelly. I was trying to find her.
I think that's something parents are really concerned about.
Absolutely.
Because the time students are going to be unmasked is when they're eating and having outside, you know, and again, masking outside is not necessary.
Correct.
So I just want to make sure that we're increasing outside eating areas at schools and what the process is to make sure that happens.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Are we having any problems getting the materials that we need, the equipment that we need? Because I know just in my company, as far as the cans and different things like that, that you wouldn't think that you would really have trouble being able to get in. But we are having a lot of trouble with getting paint cans in.
We are. We actually just started experiencing the paint shortage last week or the week before as we were getting ready to start a new school. My staff brought that one to our attention. So we are. It is slowing down. I know Darryl just had a phone call today, or this weekend, about buses. You know, we got very lucky on our activity buses that we ordered in the spring because had we waited another two weeks to bring that to you, we wouldn't get them for a year because they can't build anymore.
Right. And that, you know, is something that I think, gosh, we really have got to get a handle on now because it looks like it's going to be worse in the future than it even is right now. So I just wondered where we stood on something like that. Even roofing, I mean, we're talking about roofing and what we're going to need, you know, for shingles and things like that. But there just seems to be a tremendous delay on being able to get the things that are needed at this time.
There are. And, you know, we've really tried to move forward with kind of standardizing the different systems that we use, the roofing that we're moving towards, you know, the new roofs that we're installing, they're 20-year warranty roofs. It's a new material. And so, this may challenge us to have to think about what materials we use. And do we have to make some adjustments in those standards to be able to get products moving forward? Or can we stand, stick to our standards and wait it out? Those will be some very challenging questions for sure.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you. I just wanted to make sure, you know, we were aware because sometimes if you're not dealing with that, you don't think about things like that.
Yes.
But there is a severe shortage on, you know, construction needs right now.
There are. And we've even spoke, I spoke to staff earlier today just about our responses in work orders, you know. And so, in our work order system, anybody in the school system can submit a work order. And that work order goes back to them via email so they know that it's been submitted. And then, they can see the notes that are updated on that project. And really working with our staff to ensure that instead of just responding in that work order to say, "Parts on order," really trying to elaborate a little bit around, what's that lead time look like? Because we need to be able to make informed decisions. If it's going to be a four-week lead time on a repair part for an HVAC system, we need to work with those principals to determine where those students might be learning for that four-week period. How do we make those adjustments? And we're there to support them in that process.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
To follow up on that, Lauren, so that is accessible for anybody in the school system, like after a work order is put in, the principal has access and staff as well to all of those notes?
Yeah. So it's actually a dual system. So anybody that has a district email can go into the system and put a work order in. And then, based on the building that they're assigned to, it's also going to shoot an email about that work order to the principal so they can see that someone on their staff has placed that work order. And that way, if it's a widespread problem, there might be five teachers that put in a work order about the same thing. And that can get cumbersome in our system. And so, the principal can kind of look at that and say, "Maybe I'd like my lead secretary to put in the work orders, bring it to her," so that only one work order goes in. But they can triage some of that. But then oftentimes, you know, principals may be doing a classroom visit or an assessment and the facility specialist or the technician can't get to them to give them that update. This way, even if we update an office staff member or we update the teacher, the principal still gets that update and knows what's going on in their building.
That's great. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, about bipolar ionization. I've gotten several emails saying, you know, is it effective, is it not? I know we installed it in some of our schools. Have we had any issues with our bipolar ionization?
Sure. So we've installed it in every single building and every single system that we have. We have completed that. We have had some issues. So one of the things, it's very new technology and it's really hard to know something's working when you can't see it. When we first rolled this out, I was really surprised because the device is about this big and it mounts up in these systems. So it's not like you see something doing this work every day. And we had three schools that did have some concerns. The weight of the unit was installed actually caused some damage to those systems. And so, we were trying to mitigate those problems. It turns out, the vendor, which is Plasma Air, that designs that unit, made updates to their manuals after they had already issued the product and how to install those products within our systems. But that information didn't make it to us. I was very pleased to hear that Plasma Air corrected that problem and offered compensation to provide for the repairs that were needed to fix those issues. And so, there were numerous texts that were on hand, plus our own texts, to get into those schools to pull the ionization off, do all of those repairs, and then put those systems back on and attach them appropriately.
So that, so that expense didn't go through the district?
It did not. It was not a local expense.
Okay.
And it was about, I think it was about $50,000.
Okay, okay. Back to the ionizer, so how much have we spent on that and where did that funding come from?
So that was the initial funding for ESSER dollars. I can't remember if it has a specific name, but it's not part of this new pot that we have. CARES Act, thank you. So it was the CARES Act funding. This is so great, you just like, you point, like. And so, in the beginning stages, the state was very supportive of the school districts to be able to kind of waive some of that uniform procurement guidelines because they knew that we were really trying to get kids back into the building and they knew we needed to get work done. And get work done with vendors that we had relationships with, but also vendors that had products. And so, I can't remember completely. I want to say we spent just over about a million. I can get you that information. I do recall one of the waivers we did was for about $600,000. That's why I'm trying to do my math. That was for 57 schools. And we used two different companies to provide those installs. So because we have so many different systems throughout the district, the same bipolar ionization unit could not be used on every single piece. There were different units that we needed and different vendors had different units.
Did we do a bid on those vendors? Did we?
We did not. We did do, we did do the waiver process because we had relationships with those vendors. They know our school buildings very well because they've installed a number of the systems. And they also had the bipolar ionization units available, which is that Plasma Air unit that I was talking about a minute ago.
And I think that's what you were saying earlier is that the state kind of allowed us to do some waivers and do some things because we were, we didn't want to wait on sending things out to bid because we were trying to get the kids in the building. We needed to just move on the project.
They did, they did. And it's very similar with custodial. You know, we already had a contract with Bud &amp; Smo. And so, we knew that we needed to increase our cleaning process. We weren't going to do another bid and bring in another contractor just to do cleaning high-touch services and just to mop our classrooms when we already had those existing contracts. So they allowed you to expand contracts and do those things to get that work done. In this new round of money, it will be uniform guidelines that has to be provided. That is releasing an RFQ. It goes onto the state IPS, which is a procurement site that casts almost a national net. There are tons of marketing firms that troll that system to find bids for different companies. And it's a two-step process. And so, it's an RFQ to do qualifications for engineering consultant firms because we have to design the systems. And so, that's not so much as a bid because you're not looking at a price point. And then, from there, once we design that work, then from there, we take that design and that design gets released in an RFP or a formal bid process. And then, vendors can come forward. They can do, we'll do a pre-bid meeting. They can look at the systems, look at the school, look at the design work, all those different things. And they will submit their bid packets. And then, a committee will open those and that will most likely be comprised of our purchasing director, probably Kelly Hales, because there's an added layer that these have to go to DPI for approval because federal funds don't typically get used for things like indoor air quality. And they really want to make sure that it's being used for the right purposes and not just replacing equipment.
Just one other question. Are you seeing, as much work as we have going on right now, are you seeing contractors having trouble deal with shortage of laborers?
Yes. We are experiencing a shortage of laborers. Contractors are experiencing a shortage of laborers. Supplies are short. Yes, it's interesting. That's probably the word to kind of sum it up. I just, I've never seen anything like it.
Ms. Mott-Singer?
Yeah. Back to the bipolar ionization. And thank you so much for all you're sharing with us. But there have been several different opinions about how useful or not useful it is. What is the current research that...
Well, I do not have that with me, but you are correct. There are numerous opinions about whether or not they feel like that's effective. I think we can certainly look to get some of that research for you if you would like to see some of it. And we can, we can explore that a little bit further, but I don't have that on me this evening.
And just like any area, I really count on you guys to understand operations in a way that I know that I never will. So I'm counting on you to be able to send us good, valid sources because there is a whole range out there in the public. And I want to make sure that we're...
Yes. I appreciate you trusting us with that.
Having the best sources. Well, and I do trust you and I do trust Mr. Walker because you've always done right by our district. And I just would like to be able to see good research. So thank you.
Absolutely. We can get that for you.
Lauren, I have a, just a question. I know when we're coming off, and I know we don't know this, but when we look, we're looking at replacing HVAC systems in several of these locations, you know, replacing ERVs, things like that. And I'm assuming that probably a lot of those systems, HVAC systems, through the, over a course of a year, probably have a lot of work orders that turns into money. So from the savings that we are, that we may have in maintenance, not ESSER dollars, right? These are ESSER dollars. But if we're replacing things, it should maybe cut down on maintenance costs on some of those things. Is there a way to then, as staff, can you revisit and look at? Because this list doesn't encompass everything. I mean, I know we have locker rooms that don't have probably EVRs or air in there. We have training rooms that don't. We have gym lobbies that don't. So once we kind of start moving in that direction, can staff look at what the potential savings may be and then bring back to building and grounds where we could kind of do some more of this?
I think it certainly remains to be seen kind of what that budget will look like on the local level for, if we are able to tackle so many of these systems. Will that show a decrease in our repair costs specific within HVAC? And if that is the case, then that may be a possibility. And Darryl and I can certainly talk about that. And we can certainly speak to the staff about that being a direction we want to look at for future capital dollars and how we use those funds if we want to add things in those areas, things that we can't do with those ESSER dollars.
Well, I think, and I know part of that we'll talk about with, later on with the facilities assessment, but if we, just again, to make things, you know, do the right things by our students and make, you know, the locker room at, you know, and I'll just say, it was brought to my attention like not long ago about Glenn, and I think it's their locker rooms and they have no ERV or anything in there. So what does, you know, so I guess to set that standard. And I think some of those things will be identified from that facilities assessment. And then, if, you know, it may not be as much savings, but whatever it is, if we could probably try to, again, make things equal in our facilities, that would be good.
Yeah. Based on how we assess, do that facility assessment and what we choose to assess, that assess, that could certainly be something that's encompassed.
Okay. Other questions of Lauren on this particular issue? Okay. All right. So, I think we will talk with Mr. Walker around that RFQ for the facilities audit.
Good evening. I want to add just a couple of things to Lauren's presentation and to Ms. Mott singer's question about outdoor classroom. I forgot any fog ups of that. Is that there are some significant dollars in the Essor funds for outdoor classrooms. That project's working in conjunction with our Forest for Sike project and had some conversation. And Kristin Hoff is working with us. And so, we'll be designing some outdoor classrooms as well as some trails and walking spaces, nature trails and things like that for our students. And Nicolette's been very involved in leading that charge. And so, you'll see that come back here in the near future. And to Ms. Kaplan's question about funding on the bipolar, you may recall, we got up to a certain point where all of our schools were done and we were about a half a million short. And then, the county paid the last half a million dollars to finish those projects off. So, there's going to be somewhere a little over a million dollars invested once it's all said and done. I think that's it. I do think, and again, I'm not trying to kill her his time, but back to Ms. Woodbury's question, I do think the state's going to provide, in that budget that Andrea discussed, there's a couple hundred million dollars in there for capital work coming back to school districts in the state of North Carolina. And I don't know what that looks like just for us. Again, we don't know if that's going to pass. But, there's, you may recall, there used to be a public school capital fund where organizations or companies paid quarter cent of their taxes went into a public school capital. They're basically going to take this out of lottery and reapply it to capital projects and then school districts. And that's how they're going to fund that out of the state budget. So, you'll see a little bit more of that come back around. So, get to what I'm up here to talk about is the facility needs update. We've talked about doing a RFQ related to evaluation of our facilities across the district. And kind of the questions will kind of come out of this will be, what do we want to include in the assessment? And so, we've had an opportunity to take a look at some RFQs around other school systems around the state. And you can kind of see that there's five or six bullets there around, there's typically a big executive summary around their demographics and enrollment. You may recall, some of that work around some of these educational program reviews have been done during the corporate strategies, contract and review. So, some of this work has already kind of been done. My recommendation may be, we roll that back into this report and not pay for it again. And try to utilize the assets that have already underway as well as the capacity utilization. Some of that work was done with our group out of NC State that was handling the other evaluation. So, some of that work, we can, I think we can mesh and focus our assessment on what's really important to our maintenance department. Quite honestly, is our mechanical and building envelope conditions. And then, you know, we've talked about including items like our elementary school playgrounds around what that looks like across the districts, as well as some of our middle school and high school athletic facilities. I will add one thing to that, just because Lauren kind of did the high-level corporate view on the Essor. But, in the Essor funds, part of our plan is to go back and do the ERV, air condition, all of our middle school gyms. If you recall, we did that all in our high school and we finished that up last summer. Part of these funds will go to now make it equitable in all of our middle schools. And so, but that would have showed up in the athletic middle school facility piece of that. But, since we have a plan, it still will show up. But, we'll have a funding source for that. So, those are some things that kind of recommendations that staff has kind of looked at other districts and kind of, our charge tonight is really, excuse me, is really around, are these the items that you're comfortable with us moving forward with in the assessment as we plan an RFQ now? So, with that being said, we still have not identified a funding source for this. And so, before we roll out an RFQ, what I recommend is staff of the RFQ together, we come back to the board, let you review the RFQ to make sure it has information in there that you want to see go out. In the meantime, there needs to be discussion around where those funds would come from. And we would not release an RFQ until that was identified. And so, I'll stop there and entertain any questions.
So, I have a couple. And that's around, let me pull it up over here. And so, yeah, I got it now. Thank you. So, can we talk about the, maybe what exactly, so capacity and utilization of facilities? That's the big bullet point. Kind of help us understand underneath that, what, when it talks about, is it, we're going to assess the capacity of the commons areas, like the cafeterias, the utilization of facilities, how much we're utilizing, if there's, is it just more, you know, can you help me understand why, what are?
Your choice plan's going to come into play there and how buildings are utilized.
Well, that's, okay. So, that's what I was thinking.
Where kids are choosing to go and where movement is within the district.
Didn't we partner with someone, don't we have another partner in that area?
So, we've got a lot of that information with our group out of NC State, right?
Right.
And so, they, along with the bullet just above it, is kind of done through the corporate strategy. So, that work could kind of roll into our facility assessment. A lot of that work's already kind of done.
Okay.
So, what we're really looking at is developing what the building envelope and what the mechanical pieces look like in all of our buildings. And what are features that some schools have that others don't? And so, in top of, you know, we've heard from this board, the conversation around elementary school playgrounds and then equity around that, as well as our middle school, high school athletic facilities. So, those are kind of the two bullet items on top of the building envelope and the mechanical piece that we have looked at and recommending. And again, we can prepare the RFQ, bring it back to you. And then, you can say, well, why don't we add, give you some time to think about it. You know, why don't we add this or take this out or whatever that may look like.
So, what also, so I'm thinking, you know, we've kind of pulled out the playgrounds and the athletic pieces, but around, say, the arts. So, if in here, would we say that high school, middle school B has a dance studio that's at this level, but middle school B over here does, so all those types of things will go in? So, if it's a special?
Yeah. You assess every program we can assess.
Every program. Okay.
Arts, athletics, you know, all academics, everything kind of under the sun.
Labs, like science labs, all that equipment. Okay.
Everything gets evaluated at that point of what, you know, what they have in that science lab versus this science lab, dance floor versus this dance floor.
Okay. And that, because I think that's what we've kind of been after. I just want to make sure in these bullet points that, you know, we're as close to all of that moving forward.
Right.
I also, it's like another piece as far as the funding. So, if you're pulling together the RFQ, at the same time, can finance committee, you know, finance director, at the same time, kind of figuring out a funding source, a funding source for this? So, that we're not, because, you know, this is kind of continues to be delayed a little bit. It's going to take a while for the thing to happen. And while he's, you know, while they're working on that and putting that together, can that be identified?
I think that's reasonable. It's completely reasonable.
Can, in that process as well, with exactly what we're going to look at, would we have some idea of exactly how much? I mean, a ballpark range of what it's going to?
Yeah. I would anticipate when we come back to you with RFQ, we will have a good idea. I think by eliminating, you know, some of these bullet items here, that we could probably take a couple cent per square foot off of what I'm anticipating. But, yeah, I think we can come back with kind of a good roundabout number that you can bank on.
Are we also going to include in that technology or anything like that?
It's really up to board. I think that's, going back and looking at previous assessments of some other districts, they included technology in that, what that looked like. So, I think we can cover whatever you want to cover. And I think that's probably a good point, Will Mooney.
I think that's important to do. I mean, that's, you know, it's used in our schools and our labs and many other things. So, it needs to be done.
Actually, any programming that we have, you know.
What I anticipated showing though is some issues like in your Title I schools where they've used money and bought special furniture and done things that's going to be unique to that school, that a lot of schools and districts aren't going to have. And you're going to see that. And then, we're going to have to decide as a district, what is our standard and move forward on that once we make that decision. But, you're going to see that across the board in a lot of schools where they've had some flexibility and with some funds to do some of that kind of work, which is okay. It's just, you just need to be prepared to see that. And our community needs to be prepared to see that. Yes, ma'am?
Are we, what I would kind of like to see when we're doing this is, what is the most important thing that we need? And when we look at our schools, if we can kind of itemize what we feel like is something that we've got to have versus something that we can kind of do with or do without. But, I'd like to know, like roofing, you got to have roofing. If you don't, you're going to have, you know, all kinds of problems with your walls and everything else. So, I just wondered, when we do this, is there any way that we can kind of put the most important things?
Yeah. I think we definitely can come back in the end and prioritize some things for you.
I think that would, for me, that would be something that's essential.
I think that's in our initial request is to have a prioritization.
Final report and master plan recommendations.
And with this will-
And it will help a lot in planning the next bond.
Right. This will set, this will set the standard going forward for the next bond referendum and where those deficiencies are. We then would come back to you and say, we recommend the next bond, that we go put a dance room over here because there's not a dance room here. But, every other school's got a, whatever that may look like. But, I think we can come back with a priority list. Once we get the final summary, I'm anticipating it to be a pretty large report. But, I think we can kind of get an executive summary that tells us, has good information around that.
It sounds like it will really help with the bond to, so that it will feel less random to the community. Why did this get picked? Did this not get picked? It will be very clear. These are the most critical in order. I think that's really helpful.
And I think, kind of piggybacking off what Ms. Mott singer said, I think part of this board's effort in doing that was also to establish a facilities advisory committee. We each asked someone to be a part of that committee. And I will have to say, the last time that we met, and Daryl was kind of doing an overview, a little bit of this process. And it was brought up, I think there by members, should all the schools, should we look at a brand-new, a brand-new school that's just come online or some newer schools to save money, that staff could probably go in and assess because they have, you know, a handle of what's in there? So, I do feel like I should at least bring that up. From that group, they did say, you know, to look at savings, should that be something that we consider? And I don't know, Daryl, if your thoughts on that or if you want to share. I don't know if that makes it cumbersome for, you know, so it's not, you know, it's not all in the big report. If that's not kind of what we're looking for. Or, what's your recommendation on that?
Well, I think, I think that, to your point, it's a brand-new school. We know everything in there. We know where everything is. But, then, in the day, we probably, to the general community and public, we probably need a full inventory of things. Not that we couldn't add to that with what we know about that new school. But, I think at the end, we just need to make sure it's included, whether it's us or whether we do the evaluation. But, it could save you, you know, if you're thinking, you know, ten cent a square foot on a hundred thousand dollar, I mean, a hundred square foot building, you've got some pretty significant dollars there that you save by that. And I think we can have that conversation when we come back with the RFQ and say, how far do you want to roll this out?
But, like we know, some new schools haven't had facilities, like Smith Farm Elementary didn't get a playground. So, even though it's a new school, it didn't get, you know, it didn't have what should have been the standard.
Yeah. You're right.
And I think what they were saying is that since they're newer schools and we have done as a district, a better, you know, with technology, have a, having a tracking record of what's in the school and, you know, that, yes, no playground there, all that kind of stuff. Then, it might be that staff could help provide that for the full summary since they, just the inventory piece of it was a little different. So, maybe if we can, just, you know, when you come back with the RFQ, what would that look like?
Okay.
But, it was a great suggestion. And that, let me just say that that, we, that was the first time that that group has been able to meet in person. And just so the board knows, I think that's going to be extremely beneficial to the district to have those community members part of those conversations.
Yeah. Mr. Jabar's here. He's part of that. Thank him for his contribution. He's been very supportive through this process. So, thank you.
Can I add to that to your point? Yeah, long years ago, many, many years ago, we had a committee that, a community committee, that went through and looked at all schools for everything. They had a, you know, they had a checklist, so to speak, that they all went through and different community members. I think they divided it up with zones at that time. Each of them, each group took a couple of zones. But, it was very helpful. It was very, that, you know, they all looked at the same rubric, same things to look at. And they also, it was helpful that, it was good to have community members in the schools to see exactly, rather than going on people's word. But, it was an eye-opener. And it was a large committee, much larger than our facilities of about twenty, twenty-five people, community members. But, it was, and it was, they did a very extensive report for the board, about a hundred and fifty-page report, which was very opening for a lot of folks. But, had a lot of good community buy-in. And I, you know, if we do decide to look at this a little differently, that, and it, just from my perspective, that worked very nicely.
And for those folks in the room that are new to the district, that's kind of how Ottawa Warehouse got built, is they recognized the fact that we didn't have a central distribution center for our supplies and our books and all these things. And we were, you know, we were just all over the place. And that committee came back and said, you need a central distribution point for all these items. And that's how it got built. And so, I think the extra chamber kind of led that group. But, you're right. It brought that asset to the district, as well as some others. I'm sorry.
Well, and this group is, just to know that now that we're kind of meeting back in person, and that was the first group, Colons putting together some visits, site visits, so that they will actually go through. And kind of the first piece is a school built in the nineties, you know, out of the two thousand and six bond to, you know, that sort of thing, so that you can kind of see how the space looks different in the schools. And so, a little bit like what you were saying, Ms. Parker. And I'm sure once this facilities assessment comes back, that'll be a tool for them to use as well.
And Daryl, so what is the timeline? Again, what are we talking about? When are we going to, I mean, there are some glaring facility needs that probably will rise to the top with the assessment. Can we, do we have to wait for everything to come back? Or, can we start addressing things as they become?
Well, I think once, I think once we draft the RFQ, get you approved, the content of the RFQ, and obviously identify funding source, I'm going to, you're probably looking at about a five to six-month turnaround, probably, to go through everything, be my guess, to bring back. So, just whenever that starts, you know, maybe it's a shorter window. But, I think that's the worst-case scenario.
So, RFQ, to Ms. Kaplan's point, if RFQ, are we saying that the next, so next month, would we, we feel like we would have something to come back from that RFQ? Or, is that too quick?
Well, I think with a lot going on, I don't want to commit. I really, I mean, I think that we can jump on this pretty quick and long, because we've got some samples of other districts. So, we can piggyback on some of that. And we can add that language and surely probably bring you back a version that you could scratch on and make a decision if you want to continue to move forward. But, I think that part will be, be able to roll out. I think getting qualified vendors and, you know, once we send that out, who we send us out to to get qualified vendors for it.
So, some of my concern, the reason I say, and I know you guys have so much going on, but I think we talked about this like in June, like at our very last building and grounds meeting. And I do think that we do have some glaring things that, and the board, you know, kind of said too, we're going to be a little cautious, I think, around venturing into some of these things. Our board members had kind of alluded to that because they wanted to see the assessment. So, if we, if it would be possible to bring that back and identify a funding source, then, you know, the work gets done. And then, we can look at how to, you know, rectify. I mean, this is going to be the easy part. The other part's going to be how are we going to fix the, you know, the issues that come up. But, you know, just also for our, for our community to be able to see that and understand. So...
Okay. We'll commit to that.
If we could do that, that would be great.
Okay.
Other que, I'm sorry, Ms. Mott singer.
Just two quick thoughts. What is, if we could have that for the full board meeting, at least a proposed RFQ, that would be great. And then, the other thing I just do want to point out is that our operations people have always done a really good job of bringing to us the most critical needs. For example, the roofs, which are, here's the money. And they know immediately what the most urgent things are. So, I don't feel like as we're doing this, that the things that are really coming to the top are being ignored. They're being addressed. And our operations folks know, they know the physical reality of our buildings really, really well.
And I think you're right, Ms. Mott singer. I think especially when it comes to maintenance issues and things like that, it's definitely, I think some of those things that we have forgotten about where, you know, we bring back middle school sports and we have a modular unit sitting on a perfectly good, you know, baseball field and can't play there. So, I think those are the kinds of things that we just almost, we ride by and we see the, we almost forget that there, you know, that that has happened. And those kinds of things that go beyond. So, do we have any other questions on the RFQ? If not, then I think- So do we have any other questions on the, the RFQ? If not, then I think, Mr. Walker, we can talk about the Haynes property at Indiana Avenue?
Absolutely. So tonight I wanted to kind of.
Let me just, before, I don't want to interrupt, but before we get started, I, I think it's important that, that we at least acknowledge, because I think all of us have received a letter from Councilwoman Burke, who used to be one of our board members. And I know that, I mean, I think there's been a press conference and definitely some, some conversation around the property and, and could there be uses there? It, it looks like maybe what initially Daryl had brought to us may not do the zoning there. But I think that Councilwoman Burke brought up some great things that the community needs, it seems like they need. But I, I think that it also pairs with, you know, my hope is that we can have some conversation around this property. And so it, it fits the needs that the district needs, but yet it also fits the needs that Councilwoman Burke has brought up. And I think if that, if we could do something like that, then it's a win-win for, for the whole community. So, you know, I did, I just want to say that I, I do, we want us to acknowledge that there have been things brought to us, but we're just kind of trying to go through the process, I guess, on our end.
Yes, ma'am. So I did, I did previously talk to you about the potential possibility of moving our maintenance facility as well as some of our departments to the Haynes property on Indiana Avenue. Due to the fact there's some zoning issues around that, as long as it's a school, there's not a zoning issue. But once you bring the maintenance piece in, it becomes an industrial use facility in the minds of the planning board. And so with that, it could still, it could still be, it's only changed. But the councilman in that ward has to agree to allow that to happen. And so that's kind of what started the conversation around the use of the, of the facility. So we have since backed up and kind of said, okay, well, we're working with the county on another location for our maintenance facility. We'll be coming to you with, with some of that here in the really near future. But we kind of had our initial walkthrough and did some conversation around that this week. So right now, it, it's just to kind of give you a little history, we did vacate the property in two thousand and fifteen. And so I mentioned to you that, that, that right now the rezoning issue is not on the table. But as staff, as a district staff, in, in, in meeting with Mrs. McManus, we have identified several different capacity needs within the district from a program perspective. And so we want to talk a little bit about that tonight and then I will kind of get to what, what our ask is as we move forward. So here's a few of those needs. This is our last year of the Kingswood School at Crossnor. We, we have to relocate off that campus after this particular school year. So right now there are seventeen classrooms there that we'd have to find within the district. And as you know, we really don't have seventeen classrooms that are empty out there within the district at this point. So that, that could be an opportunity, as, as a use opportunity. We did put in there the maintenance facility, so by fall of two thousand and twenty-three, we, we have to relocate where we currently are. Right now our technology staff and, and Kevin has nineteen or twenty people probably working from home, twenty-five. And then he's also got a staff at Whittaker Park, which the county purchased and is allowing us to use it for this bond for dis, for technology distribution. So at the end of this bond, we'll lose use of that facility. And then it will probably go back on their inventory for economic development. So we kind of need to find a home for our, our technology department. And so they're part of our planning process as we go, as we move forward. We've talked a little bit about a student, student services wraparound, services around, as you see, psychology, psychology services evaluations for social workers or homeless students. Just a, just a wide range of, of services that are provided for our student services is that is a potential need within our district. Our newcomer center for ESL and our families, right now it kind of sits, you know, in a couple of different places. And also our exceptional children, as you know, are really kind of spread all over the whole county. And so is there a way to bring that unit together to, to better serve and be more efficient? We also have the old Diggs Property Elementary School that is currently our EC pre-K intake center. You may recall, some of you've got an email that there was, there was some interest from a community-based school around the use of that property. So we're looking at what, what's possible around that. We definitely got to have a bus garage repair space in the near future. And child nutrition has a need for office space and cold food storage, their building really doesn't meet ADA compatibility. And so instead of sticking a million dollars into that building, we're, we're going to look at rolling all these services together in one, one service center. So, so the lot of the, the, the real ask tonight is really not necessarily to ask you to reutilize the building right now. It is to reprogram, to program it, to see where we can fit some of these needs in and that, that is an asset that we'd like to program. And so I won't get too deep in the weeds with that. I did, I think you did receive a copy of a new air quality study that we had done from a separate group, different than the one that did the original study. And we can get into weeds on that a little bit later, but tonight is really to allow staff to go out, engage with the architect and do some space planning for that location. And that, and then, and then no other decision other than let us space plan and then come back with a recommendation in the future.
So, I, so it sounds like, based on just this list alone, that we have a lot of, there's a lot of need, I mean, we have a lot of needs for space. And then this, this isn't on here, but also I know central office is like, our central office building is packed. We, we're going to need office space at some point as well, right?
Yeah, and so part, part of that plan may be, we've got kind of our transportation call center in our, in our building, really needs to come out. They're going to go, they're going to go together with this group. So there's going to be, you're going to, you're going to see us come back with a recommendation for a kind of departmental, large departmental operations type facility and encumber, encumber a lot of these needs. Some of it could be here in this building, some of it could be in another location that we're looking at for our maintenance facility.
Ms. Kaplan.
Daryl, can you sort of, since we had shut it down in two thousand and fifteen, what, what kind of cost have we incurred from just that building sitting there?
Yeah.
What, what does it cost every month?
Good question. You know, in any building that you walk away from, whether it's your house or a building, you got to keep the utilities on or it'll just kind of fold in.
Plus there's a lot of, you know, damage, vandalism.
Yeah, we've had a lot of, unfortunately, some vandalism there. But it costs us about eighty thousand dollars a year to keep the air and the heat on, just to keep circulation in the building. So we don't have things falling. Not that we haven't had some issues there, because we have. We've got some roof issues there we need to fix pretty soon. If we decide we're going down this path, we, we got some work we need to do kind of quickly.
You said something about five million on top of that?
I think we're going to be somewhere in that three to five million range at the end of the day, when it comes back to just kind of going back and sprucing things up, regutting the building, new ceiling tiles, new stuff in there. We got to put the intrusion system underground as well as the ERV unit to get airflow through the building, which we, we didn't have before. One of the reasons why we, we, the decision was made is we, we didn't have those features, right? And so part of that money is to include putting those features on the building so that, that, that we have the monitoring as well as airflow. But we will come back to you with, with the program and then you can do, we, we can talk about moving forward or not at that point.
Daryl, could, could you just give us an estimate as to what that building is, is actually worth?
Well, if you look at the tax records, it's about eighteen million.
Eighteen million, okay, thank you.
Ms. Crowley.
Yeah, so I know when it closed in two thousand and fifteen, the site was said to have a toxic plume in the groundwater underneath the building. And there were four wells installed and at that time one was functioning. What's the status of that whole toxic plume and the groundwater?
There's actually more, more, more monitoring wells than that on the site. The, the, the recent study actually shows the plume has shrunk and, which is a good thing. And, and I, I need to, I need to thank Ibo for that because they could have washed their hands and walked away from this and they have continued to monitor and pay for this monetization. And they are committed to it as, as long as they're in, you know, they've kind of closed that plant. But they, they are continuously on a monthly basis, continuing to work in the monitoring piece of this. So they've been a great partner in it. But right now the study actually shows that the plume has shrunk, that there is no intrusion. Now, I'll be honest with you, when we did the orig, this last study, their HBAC wasn't running, so you don't know what the airflow looks like, right? So, so a piece of that would be probably a second kind of type, smaller evaluation, once we get up and running. But the, the big, the big recommendation is the intrusion underground as well as the ERV unit. And that, we, we just didn't have those before.
And, and didn't we try to lease this property in the last couple of years? Didn't, wasn't there interest in leasing it and that fell through? Why did, why did that fall through?
We actually had a charter school come.
Right.
And, and, and they decided to go to another location of, and they're no longer in business. But they, they did come to us and inquire about that. The Little Theater is in there, is a tenant of ours. And again, another great partner, because he's building sets and providing costumes for our high school drama departments. And they've been a great partner in this and he is in there and, and, and I'm going to try to find a way. When you see the plan come back, I'm going to incorporate him in there. To Ms. Jones's point, you're going to see a piece of that that I want to save for community use. So maybe the Lawrence portion will be a dental, a medical clinic space. Conference room, meeting space, if the big four, Mr. Jabar wants to use it for, have a community meeting, he can use it. And then we've talked about converting the kitchen to a teaching kitchen and working with some partners to come in to teach folks how to cook food, can food, do that on weekends and after hours. And so it gets some of that community use and that kind of would be our, our way to go to our partner in the city and kind of say, you know, here's our collaboration. You know, I know it's not exactly what they want, but we're, it, it is a little bit of an olive branch to put out there.
So Daryl, I, actually that was going to be my question around sort of what, what the building's being used for now. Because I think I've sort of heard just in the community, particularly when it sort of was brought up relatively recently and there was some, some, you know, sort of coverage of it was this, you know, the concern about the usage of the space and how safe it was. But I think addressing the fact that it's being used right this minute, the Little Theater is in there and there are classrooms full of those costumes. I think addresses some of that. So other than the, you know, of course, there needs to be some work done to the building to sort of bring it back up to speed. But, so what you want, just to be clear, is you want us to say, go ahead and just look at the feasibility of sort of what can be put there.
Right, yes, sir.
And then you'll come back to us with the details.
And then, then at that point, we can decide if we want to move forward with any further decision outside of just programming or not.
Okay. Is, is it, is it possible, because it seems like based on these needs, the answer is no. But is it possible that you all might come back and be like, we need to use this as a school? Or is it more likely that it'll be for some of these pieces?
I have to be honest with you and tell you, you've got seventeen classrooms with a need at Kingswood. And, and there's no doubt in my mind that there's, there's not seventeen other classrooms to keep that program together. You know, we split that program this year. Part of it's at Diggs, you know, our K five is at Diggs Latham. And then our middle high school was on the campus. I, I think our plan is try to put that unit back together and that would be a great location to do that.
So that is a school, it's not, it wouldn't use the whole building.
And quite honestly, it, yeah, it's just, that's just a small portion. I mean.
But it is a school.
You've got a hundred thousand square foot building there, which you can do a lot of stuff with. I will tell you, the Little Theater is really interested in repurposing the auditorium, it has a high school auditorium there to have productions and things. I really think there's some things that could happen. I've actually had some conversation with some folks in the community that are, that would like to see some jobs come back in that building. And some people that could eat there, you know, lunch and breakfast around the, around that area. And so I think there is, I think there is some support there, but we'll, we'll, we can make that decision at a later date.
Daryl, I like what Mr. Jabar said about being able to bring the community together in there. You know, when you were talking about the kitchen area and things like that. I think that would be a real plus for, for, for the community.
Well, I, I mean, I, I can see us maybe partnering up and doing some GTE classes at the evening for, for community in those spaces. I mean, there's, there's a mirror of a hundred things that we can utilize it for. The main thing is we utilize it for services, for education, back to our children, our community.
Yeah, I, I, I just wanted to make a comment that I think it is critically important that people understand that there was a time in industrial production where things like solvents were poured directly into the dirt. And that if you go into urban areas, anywhere in the United States, anywhere, there are a hundred and twenty sites in Forside County that are identified that way. And it's important that we all learn that these areas, these buildings are good buildings and they're usable buildings. And if you want to remediate them in certain ways, that's doable. But I think it's really important educating our community that these kinds of plumes are under most of the city of Winston-Salem. And that it is important that we reclaim these areas. One of my strongest reasons for wanting to make a deal about that is that if we don't learn about this, we will never build schools in cities again. And that would be a terrible, terrible travesty against our children. So I think that it is critically important that we reclaim this building and that we make it a positive, positive experience for Forside County as to what we can do together.
Yeah, th, those of you that have been around a while may remember, we had a similar conversation around where the Career Center site is. And there was a building in the parking lot there that had some contamination that, that, that we, we, we worked through. As well as back in the old times days, Liberty Street had a lot of what's called gas station or filling stations back in the day. And there was a lot of petroleum and stuff and so it kind of migrated downhill. But there's ways to mitigate that. And so we were successful at that at Career Center and I think we could be successful.
The Innovation Quarter, Whittaker Park are both areas that were industrially contaminated at one time. And they are now some of the most prized areas in Winston-Salem. And I want our buildings to be amongst the most prized areas in Winston as the Career Center is.
Yes, ma'am.
Something I wanted to add that is very important as we strategize for the future. In this meeting where we discussed needs, we are also discussed current assets that we have. One of the things that we don't want to do as we move forward is to piecemeal programs. And, and so if, if this building is a building that we want to use, if we think about it as student services and wraparound services and want to partner with the city, so that, something that is all comprehensive. We're not going to put a school there of students, of seventeen classrooms of students, plus everything else. We're not going to piecemeal. We talked about many of our assets. So as we move forward, we want to be strategic in the use of our facilities. You know, we talked about some of those, the Diggs, the Diggs property that is right now the EC pre-K intake. Is there a better, is, is that a good place for that or somewhere else where then could those classrooms be used? So this is not just a Haynes property discussion. It is, it is for the, for the purpose of, does our board want us to move forward in thinking about programming and any kind of partnerships with the, with other, with the city or with the county? But it's also, we're not just going to piecemeal things and that's the problem now. We've got some things downtown, the intake center, which is not as conducive. We have things everywhere. We want to bring things together that make sense as we move forward. So I just wanted to make sure you know that we're not just going to put a school in there and this and there and this and. It's got to be a clear strategy for what we want to achieve with our facilities. Yep.
I, I will say, Daryl, if you could, or someone could send us like the air quali, the latest air quality study and, and the others. I'm not sure that, that we received that.
I think, I'll get with Lisa. She has it.
Okay.
And so I'll get with Lisa.
Right, so if we could, because I, I might have missed it, but I'm not sure if we could resend it. And then, you, you know, I think Ms. Motzinger bring up a, a good point about, you know, the, the education piece and, and that sort of thing. Daryl talked about a couple of huge things that needed to be put into the building, the membrane and the ERV. And you can't really, it's hard to do that when you're, you know, in the middle of a school year. And so I think there were a lot of reasons that went into, to moving, you know, moving kids at that time. But I don't know that it was meant to say that the, the property could never be occupied again. But it was just not, not, not right then, because we didn't have answers for, for parents.
I just wanted to add one thing.
I just wanted to add one thing, um, about, um, Darryl, as we look at considerations around the Haynes Laurent School, and, um, you know, being cooperative ideally with the city, so hopefully, I know that, um, our superintendent has initiated a meeting with the Office of Councilwoman Burke, um, to include.
Oh, you mean in the email, the original email where I said, let's discuss, yes?
Yes, 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 yes. Um, so, yeah, I was referencing that email, and I think that Councilwoman Burke has also reciprocated, um, a, a, a meeting, um, that, I can't recall the date, but I just want to make sure we're on record saying that we look forward to trying to figure out s- some type of cooperation, um, with the city and any of our municipalities here in Forside County, to try to serve our community. I will also say that, um, the president of the Neighborhood Association in the Northeast Ward, which I think, which is Shanita Johnson, has also asked to be involved in these conversations, um, and, and so, we know that she was very instrumental in making sure that we put the voting site back at Haynes Laurent, so, uh, with, in all due respect to the Neighborhood Association and their commitment to keep that community vital, um, I, I would ask that we also reach out to the Neighborhood Association.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I, a couple of final questions, sorry. So, because, anytime we talk about real estate, for me personally, I always wanna know, or, or ask around, if, if you've had conversations with the county around what, 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 if they, if they have recommendations, because if we decided, so if we decided, I, I mean, I know, based on our needs, it's not likely, but if we were to sell it, county would have first right of refusal, but do, have you had conversations with the county to sort of see if they have an opinion, one way or another, about the utilization of this property, what they're, because I think that, ultimately, because when you talk about a five million dollar cost for an outfit, we don't have that, you know, there's gonna have to be conversations down the road.
Yeah, here, the convers- yes, I have had some conversation with them, uh, to, kind of a, um, twofold answer to that is, they really don't have a specific need for it, and number two, they don't have the, they don't have those funds set aside, uh, to do any of the work that would need to bring it up to speed, and so, the building may sit there five years, and as I've told them, if it sits there for five years with no utilities on, then it, it'll be on the ground. I mean, it just, it just won't survive. We're already starting to experience a little bit of, uh, heartburn now, because, um, even with utilities on, after, after six years, you, you know, things start happening, so, um, you know, I, I don't think they really have a desire, um, and I, and I say that, um, respectfully to them, based upon the conversations I've had, 'cause I don't think they really have a desire for the facility at Haynes Laurent's.
And so, the other question I had was around, just as a general, 'cause I just, just as my own general understanding, when we have a conversation with our partners, with our, our sort of peer, um, municipalities in the county, are you, as a staff member, reaching out to staff and having conversations with staff about collaborations? Like, in a normal circumstance, if there was a question about a partnership or a proposal, are you, as a staff member, going and talking to the staff there first to initiate those conversations, or?
Staff of the county?
Or the ci- whichever, like, in, in generally, what's your approach, or what is?
Well, in this particular, I, I asked, uh, County Manager Watts directly about what, what would be your interest if that, if it were to come your way? Um, and then, um, so he kinda, kinda gave me that, you know, the answer I just gave you. Um, but, you know, typically, if there's a, if there's a question that goes to the county, I always talk to, to the county manager first, and he will direct me to whether you talk to their operations staff, or you talk to this person within the, the county, um, and then, and, and if he feels, in the past, if he felt like it, he may say, well, then, let's do a two-on-two, one-on-one with, with county commissioner level people, and at that point, I have brought in superintendent at the time, and other board members or folks to sit in on those, some of those conversations. But we have, we haven't had one of those in quite a while.
Have, have you spoken with city staff around the proposal for the Haynes property?
Uh, I, so, Councilwoman Burke sent an email and a request to meet at Ashley one day, and so, the conversation is really around the creek that runs there. Um, she had had some concerns from her constituents down in the Bowen Park area, I'm just gonna tell you, some raw sewage that was coming up out of the ground. She was thinking it was coming from the creek, and, and quite honestly, when we got there, I mean, they had, the health department was there, I mean, there was a mirror of, of departments there, which kinda called us kinda off guard, 'cause Lauren was there, our maintenance director was there, our assistant maintenance director there, 'cause we didn't, we thought we're just gonna talk about the creek, and, and the potential possibility of, I thought they wanted to close that creek, uh, creek in, which is, you know, a huge project. Come to find out, it was really related to stormwater runoff from fifty-two that ran through our property down to Bowen Park, it was causing issue, but in, in the midst of all that, walking back to the car, she did ask me, to, to be totally transparent, of, I really, I really mentioned it in that Haynes Laurent's building, um, and so, um, you know, I said, well, there, there'll come a day when that conversation will, will be had, and I said, we have a lot of needs in the district, you know, I can't, I can't promise you anything other than take it to our board, and that was kinda, that was a conversation I had with her, walking to the car.
So, you, you haven't spoken with city staff?
No, I've not had any conversation with, with, well, I did text Lee Garrity just to make sure Lee knew that I had a conversation with her, 'cause I don't like to have a conversation with a board member when, when, when you have a city manager and a county manager. I, I never have a conversation with somebody that, that, that this county manager, city manager doesn't know that conversation had, even if it's just a text message. You know, I don't say, you know, I don't hold that back, I just let them know, hey, so-and-so text me, or here was the question at hand, and, and then, I got a response back to him, related to the building, um, at that point in time, from the city manager.
Thank you.
Um, let me, let me ask you, have we had this building, since it's an older building? You know, I can't help but wonder about stuff like this, 'cause sometimes it shows up as a big surprise, as far as asbestos. Have we had anything like that checked, or, uh, do, do we know where we stand on, on that?
I, I, I'm sorry, I missed, I missed part of your question.
Okay, I, I just wondered if we've had the, the building checked, since it's an older building, a lot of times, you know, the older buildings have asbestos.
There's an old saying, it's got good bones, it's got good bones. I mean, it's a rock solid building.
Great.
You know, on the outside, um, that, that's one of the best built buildings, and that, South Main, probably the two best built buildings we got in the whole, whole county, they're just rock solid.
That's right.
So, I'm, I'm not uncomfortable with it, um, you know, we're just experiencing Mother Nature and an impact on it without it being occupied, so, uh, to Ms. McManus's point earlier, I think if we choose not to utilize it, then we, we need to probably surplus the property and move on.
But, it sounds like we have a great deal of needs that could be very well met by using this building.
And that's really what's in front of us tonight, is to, the, the question is to just, um, uh, to think about, I, I think actually, we're, you know, consider approval of staff to pursue other programming options for the use of Haynes property at Indiana Avenue. So, that's really what we're focusing on the night, and then, um, some more of the, the detail things would come out, once they've kinda brought something back to us.
And I would think we would probably, if we were leased to do that, bring that back to you, probably in September or something.
Great, okay. All right, thank you, Darryl, and, um, I think next, we'll talk about surplus of property?
Yeah, we talked about assets, and, and this is one that we've, uh, a piece of property, just so you know, that we purchased, uh, with some dollars, it was savings in two thousand six bond, with the, with the thought of building a school, kinda between Royal Hall Elementary and Gibson and Northwest Middle someday, uh, we just haven't had the growth out in that area, and you can see in, in the slide here, all that purple are homes, and then, the area we own is, is the start area. Developer who started that, um, actually, in the oh-eight, oh-nine period, went, went bankrupt, and so, um, we were able, we, we purchased the property. Um, as, as you know what the real estate market is like right now, they have been banging on the door for probably a year or more now, about the potential of surplus in this property. Um, I'd, at this point, uh, because, you know, our enrollment's kinda flat, things haven't grown in that area as the way kind of it anticipated, and my recommendation would be to come to you and say that we, um, surplus this property, go to the county and offer first right of refusal, with the mindset of, after talking to county manager, uh, that potentially, the funds could either be used to pay down bond debt, since it was purchased with bond dollars, or to go towards the maintenance projects, uh, the project, uh, as we move forward, and, and the purchase of some property for that.
How much money are we talking about?
Uh, I don't have a final offer yet, but I'm, I would just roundabout numbers, it's probably half a million dollars. We, we purchased it for about twelve thousand an acre, thirteen thousand an acre, and we were looking at twenty, probably twenty thousand acres, so.
Other questions around the, the surplus piece? No? Okay. All right, Mr. Walker, athletic facility improvement update?
Okay. My assistant here's pulling it up, there, Mr. Chair. Uh, so, this is kind of, uh, kinda coming back to you after the last special call meeting and discussions around some athletic needs that, that, um, for the district, um, as well as, uh, some that staff believes we probably, uh, really need to, to move forward on, uh, and this is around the, the, the properties for Parkland, Winston-Salem Prep, and RJ Rentals. And so, uh, we, we have put together kind of a, a game plan and some cost structures around, around the, some of the conversation from the last meeting, and, and coming back to you today, um, with, um, just, just to respond to that ask, and so, let's just, we'll start, um, uh, with the Parkland High School project. You know, we had talked about a, 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 a potential contribution to rentals, and then a contribution to, uh, Parkland, um, so, these are some of the kinda the projects, and talking with the athletic director and principal around what, 'cause some, some of their kinda needs are on campus there, we're talking about on-campus needs at Parkland at this point in time, and so, they do have a, a field there, it's within their track, um, uh, just needs a little TLC, so some of that, as we talked about sprigging the field with the Bermuda and putting in some irrigation. The actual resurfacing of the track is actually in the next summer's two-thirds plan, so that, we could probably pull, probably pull that out, we'll probably do that within the two-thirds plan project. Um, they had requested a need for a, a baseball press box, they didn't have that, they do have one, it's softball, that's down at the bottom of the hill, and concessions and restroom, um, seems to be an issue if they wanna hold a track meet there or baseball, they have porta-johns out there, so, they, they did put that in their request, uh, as well as we, um, you'll see some consistency around field lights, um, we did put in some mowing equipment for a couple of these, just to support the schools, some bleachers in that area, so that if they had track meets, or they did have some on-campus events, that there's gonna be some seating there, and you can see some scoreboard benches, goalposts, and, um, kind of some PA, um, fencing and design work, and that, that cost come up to around one point four million dollars. Um, so, we're a little bit over the one million that we had kinda talked about as a potential, uh, support piece, and so, I, I will tell you, the concession restroom, and that's about four to five hundred thousand, right there, uh, and then, the press box is probably another couple hundred, so, you know, you could get down to that if we had to, to make some concessions, and I think the school understands that, uh, if, if, if we were to move forward on these projects, but I wanted to give you the full-blown ask, and then, we can, uh, discuss that as we go forward, once we understand what our funding looks like.
So, Darryl, so this isn't, we, so there need to be improvements to Deaton Thompson, but that's gonna be in the next.
It's gonna show up here in a second.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And so, the second project's Winston-Salem Prep Tour Academy, as you know, they also have, um, a field, um, there, um, it's kinda within their track area, uh, which is a, um, kind of a gravel type track, same kinda work, uh, that, that field, when you say stabilize the field, you know, there's a, we've had some sinkhole issues there, because there's a, some underground, um, there's a hotel that's buried under, under that field, and so, there's been some, some, uh, issues with sinkholes over the years, so that's what stabilizing of the, the, the field and the track area means, so we don't fall in a hole out there. Uh, so, you see the same work in sprigging irrigation, actually asphalt in the track, that they can, um, they practice there, but they run their track meets off-campus, um, and then, again, some additional bleachers, they have some fencing there now, but it's kinda really kinda rusty, and some areas in kinda rough shape, and so, we felt like we'd like to spruce that up. Uh, again, um, some, some scoreboard, some, some, uh, posts and benches and things of that, and, uh, uh, field goal posts and things of that nature, and some design work. So, you see that needs around four hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. Remember, this is a middle high school, so it would serve both programs, uh, and programs on campus. Here's your Deaton Thompson, um, and quite honestly, you'll say, well, gosh, Mount Tabor and Glen didn't cost five point two. The one, the one thing that you need to know there is that, um, if you go down to next to the last item, this is artificial turf, so we kinda built that in, um, as, as a potential, um, location for, um, you know, if we have rain sites, and we have playoffs, and things of that nature, it's kinda centrally located, potential, maybe putting field turf there, uh, in the future, but that's around a million dollars, so if you, if you were to back that out, and stay as you are today, you're right around the same kinda money that we actually spent for Glen and Mount Tabor. Uh, you can see the demolition of the existing stadium, um, and the seating for the home side, visitor side, and again, the artificial turf is included in that number of five point two million, so, but what you're gonna see in the summary of this page, is that this is gonna be recommended to be in the twenty-four bond, and not, as part of this discussion we've had around funding, um, so, um, you'll see, you'll see that, you'll just see that come up a little bit later, uh, in the summary page.
Question?
Yes.
Um, that forty-five hundred is a reduction in the seating capacity, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, it's, it's a little bit larger than that now, but if, if, we're, we're kinda back to, it's not a two schools, it wouldn't be, potentially, would could not, would not be a two, um, school stadium at some point, and that, if we're gonna be equitable around what the other schools look like, if we would choose not to do that, then we felt like we put the same seats that we did at Glen and Mount Tabor.
Okay, and so, to back up to Winston-Salem Prep, did you say a hotel was buried somewhere?
Oh, Robert E. Lee Hotel's underneath the building, underneath the ground there.
The, underneath the building, like the, the school?
So, so, so every now and then, you might see a hand reach up and grab you, as, I wouldn't walk the track at night, if you're scared of ghosts.
Thank you, all right.
It's good to know information, right?
Kevin, can we roll to the next one, bud? So, the next one is, um, the RJR, um, fields, uh, that we, um, have discussed and had some lengthy conversation at the last meeting, um, you know, the, the staff recommendation, uh, and the planning around this, is an actual two-hundred by four-hundred practice field, that's actually official-sized field. Uh, what, I, I'll just need to tell you, one of the things that I didn't wanna do is put a partial practice field there, and have fourteen teams practicing on it, and it, you know, eventually, the grass is gonna look like this carpet right here, and we'll have a mess on our hands, and probably get a lot of blowback, because our, our property will not be, be looking very attractive. So, you know, we, we, we went excited to go ahead and, and recommend putting in the full-sized field, put some lights on it, so the teams can practice after hours if need be, we know that we have a need for lacrosse, to practice after hours, 'cause our coach is our district attorney, who can't get off at four o'clock every day, and so, uh, there's always a need for that, 'cause we, we move those kids all over the place, to try to find lights, uh, to practice in the springtime for the first, um, month or two. To go ahead and either irrigate it, um, uh, inside the field, again, it's not in here, but if you turfed it, just add a million dollars to that eight hundred ninety-five thousand dollar number, uh, we bought, to buy them some mowing equipment for it, uh, do some perimeter fencing, and obviously, the design costs. So, we're looking at a, a potential location that could be a practice field, if the school chose to do so, they could potentially play some games on campus, small games like soccer, and, um, maybe field hockey, or some of those kinda things. Still use, we still have Bolton as, as a resource backup, but there's some potential there, um, there's no seating, as you see, and there's no restrooms, as you see, and so.
So, you really can't play games there?
Well, you, obviously, you just have to go to other facilities to do that, but, um, it, it, my, my, my take on this is that we make the field a nice field, and, and not something that's gonna create more of an argument and sore eye to the general public, and so, when we say irrigate the field, inside the field, it's gonna look like what our stadium fields look like at our other high schools. And so when we say irrigate the field inside the field, it's going to look like what our stadium fields look like at our other high schools. I just need to be honest with you about that. The other question is, the next item below that is stormwater retention. And so you've got the 895, the stormwater retention is 725. Quite honestly, I'm going to step out there and say that I believe that if, if you're going to make the field nice and you can irrigate it, put the stormwater in. And, because if not, if you ever go back to it, you got to rip it all out. And what a waste kind of money that might be. So it, it also would protect us of any kind of overflow into the park if we, if we built a practice playfield there. And so, you know, we, we gave it to you this way to kind of itemize it for you to review, so that you can make some decisions. But quite honestly, we, I believe that, that what I want to see is a, is a, is a quality product in the end. So here's a summary of those needs. As you can see, Parkland Prep, you see that the Deacon Thompson is now recommended to be in the 24-bond. We did do, have an engineer study, a structural engineer study that says that we have to replace Deacon Thompson by 2025, or we'll be closing that stadium. So we're kind of in that window that what, what we probably will need to do is design before the bond and be prepared, if the bond passed, to jump in there and get it done. And have it ready before the '26 season, more than likely. And so you see the individual cost for the RJR project, potential practice field and stormwater, for a total need of about 3, 3.5 if you round it up. You know, some, so some of the possible funding sources right now could be any of those kind of saving-type opportunities that Lauren mentioned today, around two-thirds capital bond projects in the future. And if the board so chose to direct staff, at that point, what we would do is set those aside. If we have an emergency situation, we would come to you and say, can we, should we, or hold on to those as savings towards these projects? And then there will be a little bit of savings from the Wiley Bond project, I'm guessing probably around half a million dollar range, that would allow us to potentially, as a, as a potential revenue source to try to move forward. So, you know, right now, just to be honest with you, in our capital account, you know, tonight, you proved the roofs, and that, that took a little bit out of that savings. So we're going to be in that 300, 400,000 in that account right now today, once we, we do that work. But as we go forward, we're anticipating some savings and maybe some other possibilities. But just wanted to share you, with you, what, what this looks like, overall needs currently at those locations.
So, so that, so that I'm clear and make sure that we're on the same page. We, when we had the special call meeting around these, these, these same projects, these facilities, at that time, it looked like savings was like 1 point, how much?
Two.
1.2? And so what we, what we spoke about earlier tonight, and that was the roof at North and the.
RJR Gym.
Roof at RJ Reynolds, that, that, we're saying that this, it's being recommended by staff that we take that savings and put it toward the roof. So that million-two is now 300,000.
We hit up about 900,000 with those two projects, yeah.
Okay.
And so depending on what the directive is when we move forward, you know, as we bid jobs, depending on how those prices come in, then we will direct our staff, if we're to allocate some of these projects, if that is the, if that is the decision of the board.
So help me understand, so I'm, I'm trying to understand Wiley, Wiley finishes in, say, first of the year. I mean, you know, everybody's back in the school at Thanksgiving and, you know, construction's wrapping up and, and we need to grade and do something there. So what, what, what are we, because basically that area, if I'm, if I remember right, that area will be the, the practice field or really is the, the proposed site of the stadium.
Correct.
So what do we, what, what are we looking at doing if we don't have, you know, if we're, if, how, how, what are we going to grade? What, what are we going to do if, and I agree with you, Mr. Walker, I think it, you know, to me, the stormwater piece has to go in if you're going to have a stadium, right?
Yes.
It doesn't have to go in if you're going to have a practice field.
It does not.
But the, at the end game would be to have a stadium at that site, and even if it had to be phased in. So it looks to me like the stormwater piece kind of has to go with the practice field. I mean, you know, basically if you put that in there, then you would be setting the groundwork for the, if you put lights and you put, you know, you, all you're missing is the concessions and a lot of the other stuff that could be added. But I guess I'm, I'm trying to understand, what are we going to do there once Wiley's done? If we don't have money to do any of this?
Well, so in the, in the current Wiley Gym project, the last phase of that project is some grading towards a practice-type field in that location, which in, throughout this project has been the lay-down area for all of our construction material. So part of, part of Colin's project in the end will be to, was to create a, a, a space, right? Concern that, that kind of, we've had staff-wise a little bit is that, at what quality is that? So if you've got 10 or 12 teams using it, or 14, you know at some point that it's gonna, your grass is going to leave you and go away if you don't irrigate it and treat it appropriately. So that's kind of been my, my approach to it, is that if we're going to do it, let's make sure we protect the asset because we could hear more from our community around what it would look like if it, if it wasn't done the right way. As well as, there's an awful lot of water that comes off Northwest Boulevard down through there, and so we really need to protect the park. And the stormwater feature in my mind helps to bring some of that protection to our citizens that live around Hanes Park. So that, that's just Darrell's take on it, but.
And, and I understand, I'm just trying to understand from my, and I, and I agree with you, I think that needs to happen. But I'm saying, construction stops at the gym. Kids are in the building. What does that space look like if we aren't, because I.
Oh, it's just, yeah, it's just a green, it was just a.
It's just going to be green grass.
Green grass area like it is right now.
That's what I'm saying, if we, if we don't have the money to do this, at the end of that, it's just grass.
Correct.
It's really not a field, it's just nothing. Right, uneven held, right. Okay, so that, that's, that's kind of, I just wanted to get that I was clear, I think that we were all clear of, of what does that look like? And then one other question is that there's not really a staff recommendation on this officially. And, and I know that, you know, it's, it's, it's hard to, to do that when you're looking at big dollars and not funding sources. But, Mr. Walker, would you give us, I mean, if you could, give, you know, some thought into recommendation that, I know, because I know you all as staff have talked about this a lot.
Yeah, I, again, I think my recommendation would be that we grade the field to a, a quality-level field surface for the use of, of practice and potential some side, side, small games there. I, I recommend putting the irrigation and the stormwater in. And, and truly believe at that point, and put some lights up so that we, that the school can use that. It'll take some pressure off of Hanes Park and some of the issues that we dealt with there. There'll still be a need to utilize the space in Hanes Park some, but, you know, with, with the number of teams that they have, you can't put everybody on that field at one time. So you're going to have to have both assets, but it will definitely free up, like football's practicing on the outfield, the baseball field. You know, we don't have that really anywhere else in this district. And we've got other, other, you know, folks, I mean, we do, you know, we've got soccer practicing on softball field. We have a little bit of that, Mount Tabor does a little bit of that, but it's, it's just, it's just unique to the district. This would just open up an opportunity to have two assets for our student athletes instead of one. But I, I truly believe that if we're going to do it, let's, let's do something that we can be proud of. Because I, I'm really fearful if we don't, that our folks that live around the park are really, are going to be more concerned about what we left there had we not do it the right way. And that's, that's my opinion, and so my recommendation is that we, we, we do a quality product, whatever we do at the end of the day.
What do you mean by two assets instead of one?
Well, you still got, you still got some field space in the park we can use.
Okay.
With it.
But none, none on Reynolds' property, just the, just what's.
Right, right, you got, you got a city park and then you got.
So it's one asset instead of zero?
Correct, you're right. Yeah, you've got one, one school site, one piece of property on school site and the other city, city property, correct.
Ms. Parker? So if I, if I'm hearing between the lines, I suppose, what I hear you saying is that we're probably, or at least in my mind, what I hear you saying is that we're probably going to, it makes sense and we're probably going to save some dollars in the long run if we go ahead and do this now at the end of construction from Wiley. And the other thing I hear you saying, and I think this is true for all of them, which is, I think is extremely important, and I think that came out at our special call board meeting. But thi- this would allow these three schools to have practices held on campus so that students could walk out a door and be at practice, as opposed to having to transport somewhere else, which is all three of these schools are having to do now, which in my heart of hearts is a very important thing. I, I think that that is what we need to be, that, that needs to be our end goal, is to have children practicing.
Yeah, and that, and that helps Wiley the same way as Parker, because Wiley can still use the softball field and the baseball field for middle school sports. And so it really kind of keeps us on campus for the most part of all of our sports, from a practice perspective at that point.
Right, and, and it actually, actually saves money in the long run from, from a bond project of having at least the field and the lighting done at Reynolds for a, for a stadium later on, to put in a bond project so that we have.
Yeah, someday if funds are raised enough and that they can put in bleachers and restrooms and concession stands, you, you've pretty much got a, a product. But I, I think this would be a good olive branch to start supporting our student athletes.
Okay, good, so did I hear you right between the lines?
Yes, ma'am.
So, so we really need to identify the funding sources for this, and we need to really.
Yeah.
Be serious about it, and it's very.
Yeah.
It's time-sensitive.
Yeah, we, we know, we know we've got some money in, in the Wiley project because part, part, there is some grading and other stuff already in that project.
And that should go toward this, I believe.
And then we'll have some savings on top of that.
Right.
So.
Right.
So we'll have to come back to you, but there's, there's possibility that some of this could go ahead and get started as we move forward. And so while we identify other funding sources, and, and I think that we can come back. We're going to set up some meetings with staff and look at some things about, you know, like for next year, kind of where, if we have any movement, mobile modules, anything like that. So, because there are other potential possibilities for revenue that I'm not showing you here because I don't want to tell you if I can't do it. So I think there's some opportunity, we just have to come back to that. The main thing for us is to get directive from the board to say, we, we would like for you to consider using savings towards future projects and not, you know, that's, that's all we're really committing right now, because had that been the case, we probably wouldn't have come to you tonight with two roofs or three roofs, because, you know, our, our job was, was, is we need, we had an emergency need, we need to take care of it. So, you know, once we get that directive, our, our goal and guideline will be at that point, would be to hold on to any of those savings. But yet, should we have an emergency, come back to you and make a request, and at that point, the board can make a decision.
So, so, yeah, so I think we do need to have a directive for all additional savings to go toward these projects. Because Darrell, I just got to say that in conversations that we've had before, you had told me that we've put aside 1.2. I think at one point I heard 2 million, you know, just, and, and it's kind of a little bit of a roller coaster ride. So I was a little taken aback, I mean, I know we need a roof, we, we need the roofs, but I, I guess at the last meeting, I thi- I thought we were under the impression that we had about 1.2 plus whatever the Wiley savings were going to be,
And we did.
That we were going to put and figure out.
Yeah, and we had, we, that was in, that, we, right now, today, that's still the case. I mean, it proves some things tonight, but right now, that money is still sitting there. But, you know, from a staff perspective, what we didn't get was guidance to say, we'd like to utilize these moving forward. And so when this emergency need came up, you know, we just, we didn't want to stop, stop doing business until we got directive from the board. And we just didn't feel like we had that full support at this point. So I, we are prepared, if that's the direction of the board, to, to do that. Whether it comes out of this committee, goes to the full board with that, we'll be, we'll be happy and prepared to, to work with you along through to serve these projects.
But, so, I'm sorry, Lita, Lita has had her hand up.
I, I feel like that if we went ahead and did this now, that we would save enough money to be able to put bleachers and a bathroom in there. How much are bleachers and a bathroom?
It's probably going to be.
People are going to be hauling the chairs.
About 2 and 1/2, probably about 2 and 1/2 million dollars.
Well, don't you think we would save enough by doing it now, Darrell?
We don't have the.
We don't have those.
We don't have the funding, the 3.478 million.
Yeah.
That I think we're trying to get that money from savings, Lita. I don't think we're, we, it's not like we've got a pot of money that we're, I think that the goal is to see if there's enough savings to be able to address practice fields on campus for all three of these schools.
And we, and we still, we still have a partner in Home Field Advantage in this process. We have talked a lot about what can they, what will they bring to the table. We, we do know a little bit about what they have raised so far, but this, this could help kind of awake some folks in the community to kind of maybe help support as we move forward. And, and maybe that, maybe that just tagged right along with this project, it's just, it's funded, it's duly funded, right? And so we, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll be working with them through this process. And once, once, once we identify this is, this is the direction we're going, we can really start having some hearty conversation with them.
So really, all that, that we would need to go ahead and, and, you know, is to find some way to get money for the bleachers and the, and the bathroom. Am I correct on that?
Well, your, your commitment, if you do RJ1 and RJ2, is about 1.6 million dollars. And then you've probably got another 2 and 1/2 in bleachers and concession stand alone is probably about a half a million or so. And so, believe it or not, that's kind of unbelievable to me, but that's kind of what that is. And it's, it's kind of the same thing that we're talking about at Parkland, it's about the same amount of money. So you're probably looking at 2, 2 and 1/2 million that would need to be added to it to complete, complete a stadium project.
It sounds like, Lita?
Yes.
I think we had this long conversation about trying to address all schools' needs and not how to build the stadium out of savings tonight. I think we were really trying to address a particular issue, which is practice fields. And I know you were unable to attend that meeting, and I'm sorry.
I, I wasn't, I wasn't here for that.
That you missed that. But I think what we're not, I think we're, I think you're having a different conversation than the conversation, which is these three, these are the three high schools that have a need for on-campus.
Right.
And that, one of the biggest things of, you know, I agree that we need stormwater mitigation under that practice field.
Right.
Because that's a big issue, and if, and stormwater could destroy anything we do if we don't deal with it. But I think trying to go from, are, does the board want, if there are savings, to try to address the issue of the three schools having practice fields to, are we going to build a new Reynolds Stadium is a different topic. And so I'm, I'm hoping we can stay on the topic that's on the agenda, which is about.
Right, I, I think, yes, so I, I think we've got a couple of board members who have been waiting, so Mr. Bohannon and then Boardman McCrally.
So I'm sorry to take it back to prep. Do you know, Darrell, if, do you, does prep have a baseball team? And the reason why I ask is because there's that baseball diamond in the back of prep that looks like dusty and, I mean, it just, it looks like it's like unused, and I, and I know on the suggested improvements, that's not listed on there.
Yeah, cur- currently they do not, that I'm aware of, right, John? They do not have baseball in high school or middle school.
Something just went down.
Okay, and my.
Yeah.
And my question is centered around Ms. Parker's point and your point about practice field space. So when we look at that total amount of money, you know, the 3 point, whatever it was, 3.4. 4 million dollars. If we're, if we're, if we're talking about practice space, does Winston-Salem Prep have any practices off-campus? And does Parkland have any prac, my understanding was they have practice fields?
Yeah, they, they utilize, so these fields that we're talking about repairing, that's in this number. Yeah, they, they utilize, so these fields that we're talking about repairing, that's in this number, is their own campus facilities.
Okay, so they currently have a practice field on campus, but it needs repairing?
That is correct.
But it doesn't necessar- but like kids can still participate if they don't have the press box for baseball or they don't have.
Right, they still have that facility, that asset on campus.
Okay.
So, so I, I think to, to Ms. McCrally's point, I think this is some things that maybe we need to, to kind of think about. So as a, you know, and, and I think we all can, can weigh in, yeah, we're back up. We can all weigh in on this, but if our, if our, right now, if our focus is around the, the practicing piece, then, you know, it, it would make sense for us to think about what, because I think these are all, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying we don't need to do all this, I'm not, not saying that at all. But if we're talking about needing funding, what, if we really drilled down to it, what would need to happen for all of the sites? And we're, we're gonna say Deaton Thompson for a bond, we, we understand that. But the additional sites that we're looking at, what really needs to happen to make sure that those practice spaces are, are safe? If they already have existing space? And then what we need to do to put practice space at, at a school that doesn't have it? And what would that look like? Because I think that number would, would not be 3.4 million. I'm, I'm not saying that these things aren't needed and we don't need to work toward doing those things. Right, I mean, I think we'll, we, you know, I, I, I just think in this conversation, what, what would that, what would that look like? And if you're trying to, to identify funding sources, you know, what, you know, maybe that's, maybe that's something that we could wrap our head around and that's a little more doable than, than the 3.4.
I, I have a question, I mean.
Yes, ma'am.
This is a thought athletic field, so this is all talking about athletics, but didn't we just say we're gonna look at a facilities as a whole, including all of the, the education, including all of the special needs? Everything, and this will go on the list as a priority, as where it fits in the schedule compared to what we need to provide a sound education?
Right, and I, I think, a reason I asked that question is that this conversation is really coming out of a motion that was made at our special called meeting around this conversation, if I, if my memory serves me well. And that, that motion was to, to, directed to our superintendent and staff to come back to us at this first building and grounds meeting, and that's what they've brought back to us. I think to, to, if I recall, a lot of the conversation came around the practicing and practicing on, on school sites. And, and, and some of that was around the, the safety piece of it, you know, are there things that need to be done on existing fields to make sure that they can practice there safely? And then what do we need to do for a school, Reynolds, that does not have the, the, the space there? And so again, if we, you know, I would really like to see, and I get, I mean, we can go back and forth and add things up, but it would, it would be really great to see if we really just focused in on that piece, what those costs would be, and then what would that funding source be? You know, what, what, what does that dollar look like? I, I also had a question with the savings, because I think we're trying to put it in perspective. And we say, even if tonight we said, let's take all savings from two thirds bond projects and, and put, and post them and put them toward this. How long, just historically, I, I know you don't know this, I mean, it's hard to say, but just typically out of a bond cycle, out of a cycle that you go through, we're just closing out, what, the 2018, 2019? So out of that, out of a, a normal cycle like that, what did, what do you normally, what do you normally see as savings? And I know that's hard because it depends on the market and all that, but I, I'm just trying to paint a picture for myself and for my colleagues as to timelines.
Yeah, and some projects, you, you gain more savings than others. Quite honestly, the roof project bids are the ones that have probably bought in the most savings at this point. But, but again, you, you know, as, as we move forward with that, with supply and demand and things of that nature, you can't, it's kind of hard to, to project that. But I do, our, our folks feel really comfortable that our roof projects are, are, and, and are, are gonna have some savings to them for the most part. The, the ones that are really a struggle are, you know, your contract HVAC and electrical kind of jobs are sometimes challenging. But I think our roof projects is, and we've got a lot of those coming up. And so I do think there's some opportunity, just so you know, they're kind of the bid process. Typically a couple of times a year is kind of our bid, because a lot of this work happens in the summertime. Those, those, some of it will happen during school. So you'll have a, a, probably a bid process in late fall, early winter, and then again, March or April as we prepare for the summer. So you'll have kind of two cycles that you'll go through in a school year. So, you know, the main directive that I wanted to tell staff, it was, if it was the, uh, the will of the board, was when you do bid projects, no matter what it is, if you save $10 on one, we're gonna set that money aside and, and build, build a kitty until there's another source of revenue that pops up. But set it aside until we're able to start chipping away at some of these projects.
I mean, I would, Ms. Parker, go ahead.
And, and I also think the important thing, Darryl, and I don't know whether that's possible for you to get to us or not, but would be how much we're gonna save, because obviously, you know, if I'm redoing my kitchen at my house, I'm not gonna, you know, put in new cabinets and then two years later, I'm gonna put new countertops in. It makes sense, I'm gonna save money to do that. And so I, I just, i- if there's any savings, I think savings are two different things. You'll have savings on a project, but we may save money to go ahead and, and start something or get something rolling rather than plant grass where you've had your, you know, lay down area for this construction project. So I think there's some savings there that we need to know about as well as to how much potential we could save by, by looking, you know, looking to the future.
I think you'll definitely see that, and, and while Colan's contractor is on site at Wiley, it makes all the sense in the world to try to get this grading done and done right while the contractor's there. When, when he leaves and comes back, you can bet your bottom dollar, it's a much higher price. And so I don't know what that number is, but I can tell you it's higher. And so that's kind of been our discussion around the timing of this is, we knew, we knew we were gonna do some grading anyway because that was part of the scope, but to what degree do we do this grading? And so that's the directive that we're kind of need to understand as we move forward in, in this funding is what directive do we give him? And then what directive I give staff about supporting financially, how to get there? And so that's kind of the real ask tonight is really around, can we capture savings towards this or not? That's the only ask that we're really coming to you tonight for.
Mr. Bohannon?
Thank you, so, Darryl, I'm, one of the, so as I'm sort of looking at this and thinking, it, and tonight we've talked a lot about, we, we've talked about a number of potential needs to where we are gonna need money we don't necessarily have, I mean, we, like potentially for a lot of different things. And I think, you know, the impetus for my, my motion at our special call meeting was because I, I wanted to give staff the opportunity to go kind of dig in and then come back to us with some information. And sort of looking at this, the struggle I have is number one, if we allocate savings to a particular project, right? What then do we do if we have other emergency needs that come up? Where, where does the money come from? Like, so if we, if we say our savings from two third bonds, like, are gonna be allocated towards, like Reynolds RJR1 and 2, and we have an emergency that comes up that we have to address, are we then forced to sort of go to fund balance for that? Because it seems, I mean, because there are other needs that, that can come up that we just, I mean, pre-K as an example, where things kind of come up and it's like we have to pay for this. I just don't want us to limit our potential for where we can sort of look for these things in the event that we need.
So I think part of my responsibility is to come back to you. So let's just say the north and the, the roof projects tonight are not on the agenda. And we had, we had started setting this money aside and there's 1.2 million dollars. It's my responsibility to come back to this board and say, I got a real emergency need that impacts students. I really need to ask you to dip into that savings to pay for this project. And then we start all over again and start replenishing it. I, I just think that's my responsibility, and the decision behind that is, it, it, you know, that's up to the board. But it's my responsibility to come back and say, I've got a need for that, it, it impacts student and safety. And at that point, we make a decision. But I don't think, once you say you put savings over here for these projects, you're locking yourself in forever and ever, amen. If something comes up, we, we gotta deal with that. And so we're not gonna come back to you and say, oh, by the way, I need $900,000 out of your fund balance, put that roof on, when I'm sitting on 1.2 million dollars. And, and that, that doesn't, I, I, I get that, I get that we all kind of want to move forward, but I think that's the responsibility that I have, is at least bring it back to this board for a decision.
Right, and that, and that's our decision, I mean, I think you're exactly right. It's to bring it to us and then this board decides whether we would say, yes, that's an emergency, we want to use that maintenance dollars for that, or we're gonna seek a different source of funding. That's, that's, um, would be on us. I do think that it's difficult when we, again, talk about, like tonight, we talked about proceeding forward with an RFQ, but no funding source. And when we talk about this with no, no conversation around the, you know, we, we talk about fund balance, I think some of that is, it's hard when we have these money conversations, when we don't, when we have not agreed as a board, where we want the fund balance to be. Like what, where's a minimum that you want to go? And then what do you do with, with the, with, with the rest? And so, you know, I think those are strong, I think those are conversations that, that, that we need to have, not in the B and G meeting, but, but that we need to take the lead on that through finance and, and, and really have a conversation about that. Because it's, it would, I think it's hard, I think it's hard on our staff to also have them, to, to figure out, you know, where are we gonna get this when we do have money? And, and we have maybe another million or two that's gonna be added to the fund balance, sitting there and we haven't agreed to how much we feel comfortable with? And then where we spend the rest of that? And, and what, and have a, you know, a rubric, something that we agree on? So it's, it seems like every time there's something that comes up, it, it, it's, you know, it's exhausting to talk about that, you know, there's a need, but we really don't have the fundamentals in place to figure out, you know, we can't, you know, to say, no, we can't take that out of fund balance because remember, we agreed we weren't gonna go past 4 million. Right now, we just haven't even had that. So I think that might be something else, Board Member Brainerd, that maybe we could, you know, really need to address.
I agree.
And quite, and quite honestly, I'm not, I'm not a gambler to say, but as I mentioned to you, there are some significant dollars in that state budget that could come our way for these kind of projects. And so, you know, until, until that's approved, I mean, I can't tell you it's a funding source till it's approved, but when it's approved, there, there's some sizable dollars that'll come this way. And, and the question just at that point will come back is, do, can we, can we, is there enough that we can use it here? Or do we need a combination of some savings and that to do this project? But, um, you know, it's kind of a wait and see unless it's all hope and pray that the state passes that budget and we move on.
Is there a, and, yes, right, we would like to see a budget. Do other members of the board, would you like to see, I mean, I, I, I like this, that, you know, that we see this whole thing, but, but more of what I really felt like was kind of coming out of that and some of that initial conversation too? And it was, at the special called meeting, where it was really around the, the practice piece of it? And not as much of the concessions? Am I the only one that got that feeling out of that?
Um, I got the kind of feeling. I, I, for me, it was all about fiscal responsibility and that with this, we were going through, yeah, we have funds that came in, we don't have a state budget yet, but I'm in agreement with the financial piece. Yes, we would love to see this on every campus, have a practice on field, right on campus. We'd like to see stadiums on campus. But right now, we haven't gotten a list of priorities, and financially, we need to be prudent, especially since we are still in the middle of pandemic.
Well, and I, yes, he was talking, you know, that's the one thing about the mask, you can't, you know, usually when you see someone's face, you can figure out who's getting ready to speak, and you, we just, we don't have that right now. So I'm sorry if we're kind of, I feel like I'm cutting people off, but I, I can't tell, Ms. Kaplan.
Yeah, so I, you know, based on what we voted on in the special called meeting for the practice field, for Reynolds, and based on the fact that we would probably see some significant savings if we went forward with it, and based on the fact that the, um, the Wiley project includes a practice field, I believe. So I think I would, I would like to make a motion that we find the funds for this, that we, that we figure out how to direct the funds, that we, um, that we look for the sources, that we, um, that we make it a priority.
Right, and I think, I think we're, so, and we're in the discussion part. So at some point, we'll, we'll get to there. But I, I will say, I, I think that, that I would, I would still, just, just, whether it's emailed to us, just so that we can, we can take this 3.4, but if we can then just get a breakdown of what, you know, not the, not the, the extra things, but just, but just to make sure that, that if we wanted to, to focus in on practice, what would that look like for, for all these campuses and get that dollar amount?
So Board Member Jones, so you're saying, for example, in the Parkland one, there are a lot of extra things. You're wanting us to go down to, like if you think about the one for Reynolds, it's the field, it's the lights, it's the, the watering, it's, there's no concessions, there's no.
Right.
So you're saying you want to see that for all three?
For all three.
The basic field to allow practice both during the day and at night?
Because I think, yes, yes, yes Superintendent.
Yes.
But that, that in compares, because if we, we, we are understanding that without, we, we know there might be some potential from some state dollars or some other things. But if we were really looking at trying to make sure we were keeping kids safe as possible and, and, and practicing on safe fields and keeping them on campus, what would that dollar look like?
Yes, we can bring that, we can bring that back. I mean, I'm, I'm, if you want in two weeks, that's gonna be very minimal, the, the team that put that together. I think the biggest, the, the two big questions that Darryl's wanting us to get at at some point, whether it be in two weeks, whenever this, the board wants to, is can we agree that we want to use the Wiley savings? So at some point, we need to agree so that we know, and Colan's in the process of working to figure out exactly what that amount is. I don't think, and Colan, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think you've been given an exact amount of what that will be yet. But we should be getting closer to knowing that. If we want to commit that, we need to decide soon. And then our other ask was, do you want us to start creating the savings? But at the same time, we can bring back next, in two weeks, a simplified version of the practice fields so that it's not so many extras.
Correct, there, there's really no action item on your agenda tonight to take. It is a directive, and the directive asked from staff is, are you okay if we go back and have these conversations around using savings to try to move forward on some of this work?
And, and I think, I mean, honestly, that, that, at some point, again, this, we, we can look at this and we can give some direction, but I really do believe that these are, these are those things that need to be talked about at the, at the next finance meeting. I, I think we have to sit down and have conversation solely around what, what we are going to do with our funds and how we're gonna use them instead of putting them in to, to, to other committees and, you know. To me, a lot of these things, I know, I know we have to move forward with it, but, but when it lands at, at this committee, whether it's, you know, for B and G, it should, it should most likely, unless it's an emergency, have an identified funding source, or, or we just kind of talk in circles. So, okay.
I want all of these things. I want practice fields for all of our schools. I want us to deal with stormwater before we build practice fields because flooding is the biggest danger from climate change in North Carolina. I want all of these things. My concern, and it has not changed, is that we're talking about an RFP to look at the most critical needs in our district. And while we both say we're gonna look at that, at the 10 minutes later, we say, and we've decided this is the priority again. And that is where my frustration comes. It is not that I don't think these are valuable and important, but it feels to me very hard to get my head around, let's go find out what the priorities are. We've decided this is a priority before the priorities. Roofs on buildings that are failing are, I don't think anybody on the board questions is, that have to be done. Are these things we want? 100%, I don't think there's any argument. But the process of saying, let's go look and let's do the thing we want before we go look, really is hard for me to get my head around. Because to me, it sounds like we're doing the opposite. Because to me, it sounds like we're doing the opposite, we're saying one thing, and then we're saying its opposite at the same meeting. And that makes no sense to me.
What, so what I hear, Ms. Buntz, and I hear you, what you're saying, and what, what I also hear in that is that we, yes, we need to know, we want to do this RFQ to put out, so we can identify all the needs, but that, I guess, staff has confirmed with us that there's definitely some inequities around the practice piece. And then I also hear from staff saying, if we move forward on, if, if we have a construction project stopping at Wiley, and then we, before they vacate the area, that, that we would be able to save dollars if we had a little bit of a plan to, to move that piece there. And so, to me, and I, I think that's what Ms. Parker, I think Ms. Parker was trying to say as well, that, you know, if there's potential to save, and that in the long run, we're gonna save the district, you know, several hundred thousand dollars, then that perks my ears up, and I think, okay, well, let me listen to that, because, you know...
But I didn't hear several hundred thousand dollars. Daryl, is that what you were saying, several hundreds of thousands of dollars, savings?
If we, if we...
If we go now, are we saving several hundreds of thousands of dollars?
I don't know what the grading, the grading contract would be. It would be substantial, I don't know what, exactly what that would be.
So, what does substantial mean? Because I just heard by Ms. Jones say several hundred thousands of dollars.
I, I would think it would be, I mean...
So, I would like to know, not what we think it would be, but what it might actually be.
Colan, do you actually even have, have the grading there, number?
I've got a grade, I don't know what that number would be.
What, what is the number in the project? $350,000 is budgeted for the project.
And I bet if they have to leave and come back, it's probably double that.
I have some concerns, is that, yes, they brought this to us, but that's because we asked. We asked. We did not ask every single department what their needs are, we didn't ask what any other building needed. We asked for this specifically, which is why this was brought to us, which is why we need facilities that's going to look at everything, and not just athletic fields, on three schools alone. Not looking at middle schools, not looking at elementary schools, only looking at high schools.
And...
These were just the more obvious ones, because they don't have facilities. It wasn't about, like, who needed a renovation, or who needed an upgrade, or additional facilities. These were glaring, because there was an absence of facilities.
I, I understand that, but we're still talking about...
And it's created an equity issue in our district, as far as kids having access to after-school sports, and they're, and, you know, whether you like athletics or not, it's a school-sponsored and sanctioned program that all of our students should have access to, you know.
I'm not denying that, and nobody else here denies that.
And it's not like it's a new issue. I mean, I've been up here whining about it for three years, families have been coming to school board meetings for at least a decade, and the can keeps getting kicked down the road, and it is time to honor our goals of our strategic plan, and do what's right for students.
So, I just... My issue is, is that, number one, I, and I, I guess, I wanna, I wanna apologize to staff, because I know, from, just as an individual board member, because I know that over the past month, over the, over the past few months, this has been difficult, for you all to have to go to the drawing board, and to try to figure this out, Daryl, for you to try to work with these numbers. We had, even for me as a board member, I did not anticipate or, or know that we were going to have a special call meeting to talk about the stadium specifically. And, you know, I made this motion, because I wanted to, to just provide the opportunity for us as a board to see the numbers, to see what's feasible, to see where our savings were, so that there could be a potential for us to make some type of decision, right? But the nature to me of, of public education, of public education specifically within this state, is, you know, we don't have just money on top of money to just address needs. And needs come up all the time, right? Emergency things happen that we don't anticipate, and then we have to sort of move, and sort of shift and change direction. And the struggle I have, is that I have been in schools that have facility needs, but nobody is like, standing up here, championing the needs of those schools, right? And, and I think that in part, that's because of a variety, for a variety of different reasons. But the struggle I have, is that when we start to, to prioritize one individual school over another, when we know we have these needs, when we've said, one of the reasons why we need this study, is so we can have all of those things on paper, that's sort of a struggle to me. And I know that, you know, having this information is helpful, but I also, for me personally, I can't, I can't in good conscience say, I'm ready to do anything with this information, without, number one, understanding how much feasibility study's gonna cost, like, any of those things. Because again, we haven't even identified funding sources for that, right? There's just a lot of need, and we haven't really identified where stuff and how stuff is gonna be paid for, so...
So I think, I think we can, unless there's something else said, we'll just end the conversation around, around this at this point, and we're still in discussion, it's the last item for discussion. This, this funding, I mean, this item is not on our action for the, for the agenda, for this committee. I do think, though, that it's, it's something that we really need to, it's, it, I will say, it is very hard to talk about allocating dollars when we don't have some, when we haven't agreed around how much is gonna stay in fund balance, how do we spend it? You know, we, we have a fund balance, and, and for some here, it, it, from their, you know, from some board members, you would think we can't take a dime out of it. And then others, like myself, might think, okay, we, we, that's what it's for, and we need to, to spend over a certain amount, if it's there, you know, we're not in the business to just gain money in the fund balance. So, again, I would just, Superintendent, I would just think that some of these things, before they come to committee, should probably have an identified funding source, and I think we need to have a lot of conversation in finance, to kinda figure out where as a board we are comfortable.
Thank you, yes, I agree.
Okay, so, so that ends our discussion items, and that moves us into many action Several, several action items. The members of the Building and Grounds Committee meeting are myself, Lyda Calvert-Hayes, Deanna Kaplan, Marilyn Parker, and Alex Bohannon. All right, and so basically, what we're doing is moving them out of committee, and moving it to the full board in, in two weeks. So, the first action item would be to consider approval of the cell tower at North Forsyth?
So moved.
Second?
Okay, and so, with some clarification to those motions, or may I ask if you would, that we are moving forward with that, but the funding piece of it, or how we wanna do that, can we put in that we would like to send that to policy, so that we can come up with the, with a, again, a uniformed way of how we will divvy up funds?
I will make the motion like you said.
Thank, thank you, Board Member Bohannon. So we're moving forward with, with, with the, the cell tower, but we'll put the other to policy. Are you good with that, Ms., Ms. Kaplan?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Thank you so much, motion carries. Next, to consider approval of the Duke Energy easement at 1115 Louisville Vienna Road?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Okay, motion carries. And next, to consider approval of roof replacement at North Forsyth and RJ Reynolds.
Approve.
Okay, we have a motion, do a second? Second, Ms. Calvert-Hayes, all in favor? All right. Next, consider approval of, to approve of the air quality improvement project listing using the ESER funds. Do I have a motion to approve?
So, we're approving the RFQ, right? We're not...
Oh, did I move, did I miss that one?
I don't know, it's just not saying anything about...
Uh, no, consider approval of the air quality improvement, so the project list that Lauren went over, consider approval of the air quality improvement projects list using ESER funds.
That's D.
Did I miss one?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, we're on, we're on the second.
Okay.
Wait, wait, so, I don't know, approval, but we're not approving...
That's item E.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, we're on D. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, okay.
So, just the, the list of replacing HVAC systems and the EVRs, that's the D. So, we have a, we have a motion, Ms. Parker, and a second, Mr. Bohannon? Okay, so we're on D for just the list that Lauren had provided us for the ESERS.
But, but E is not, wait a minute, but E is not about the RFQ?
It'll have to be, it'll have to be a different motion than what's written.
When we get, when we get to E, we, when we get to E, we have to change that, because it's not correct. But right now, we're on D. So, we've got a motion and a second, all in favor of approving the, the list for ESER? Awesome, okay. So, yes, and E, what we're really, it says, consider of approving a funding source, but really, we're approving staff to go forward with the RFQ and bring us back in RFQ process. We haven't identified a funding source.
So, I will move that staff draft RFQ to present to us in...
Two weeks.
Two weeks, at our full board meeting, and identify a funding source.
So, so, can I just, with, could, could I, could I say that we would maybe not, not identify a funding source? I think we need to send that to finance?
Oh, yep, okay, that makes sense. So just, just the RFQ?
Okay, so we have a motion for staff to draft and bring back to the board the RFQ for the facilities assessment. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Parker, all in favor? Okay, so we're clear on what we just, what we did? Okay, great. And next, we have, consider approval of staff to pursue other programming, other programming options for the use of the Haynes property at Indiana Avenue. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Bohannon, Ms. Parker, all in favor? Okay, motion carries. And then last, consider approval of the sale of the unused property.
Yeah, approve.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, so Ms. Parker, Ms. Kaplan, all in favor? Wonderful. Thank you so much. That concludes Building and Grounds, and I will send it to Ms. Parker for curriculum.
Can I, can I make a motion, just to pursue funding for, for the Wiley Practice Stadium? For the rental, I mean, that we could just pursue, pursue sources?
Pursue sources for funding, it was not on the, was not on the agenda, but can we, we can do that, right?
You would have to amend the agenda to add that action item, and then take a separate vote on the action item. But, but I, I mean, I would say, I think that's more so a formality, it seems like there was general consensus among the, the committee about coming back with some additional funding sources for those projects, but it's, it's your pleasure, but, but you would need to amend the agenda to add that action item, and then vote on the action item.
So what, to amend the agenda, Chair Woodbury, I think that would be the whole, the action of the whole board, and then...
It would be the committee.
It would just be the committee? Okay, great. So, committee members, do you, do you want to amend the agenda to, to add that item? That we would, and I think that's what Mr. Walker, what, what I think I'm hearing you say, Ms. Kaplan, is that you would like to amend the agenda to put on a motion that we seek, that we look at, we direct staff to look for ways to fund the projects that were, that were identified.
Yes.
Could we also look at the savings?
Yes.
The potential savings at, with the construction that's being on site?
Yes, that would be part of it.
The savings from the Wiley Project, as well as any savings that we might have come about with, with potential things that we could do while they're still on site with construction.
Okay, so I tell you what, why don't we, what I'm hearing is maybe some interest in that, so how about, committee members, if you would, someone would like to make a motion to adj, to amend the Building and Grounds Committee?
I would.
Okay.
Second.
Second, okay, all, all in favor to, to amend the agenda to, to include an item for seeking funding for the athletic facility improvements that we were briefed on tonight?
Can we say seeking funding and potential savings on, from construction on site?
Yes, ma'am, seeking funding and potential savings on, on a, I don't know exactly how to word that.
But, well, for the construction on site, the on-site construction.
On site, for the athletic facilities. So that's, that's what, we, we would like to amend the, amend the agenda for Building and Grounds to, to add that as a potential, as a, as an action item. So I have a, a motion from Ms. Kaplan, and a second from Ms. Parker, so, and again, this is B&amp;G Committee voting on it, so all in favor of that? And any opposed? Okay, all right, it passes. So, here we go. So we have the action.
Actually vote on that.
Yeah, so now we get to actually vote on the item. So we have in front of us, that we are directing, directing staff to find the potential funding sources, and also talk to us about the savings of doing these, some of these projects now, potential savings, for the athletic facilities improvements that we were updated on tonight.
So I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, Ms. Kaplan?
Second.
Ms. Parker, all right, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor? All right, motion carries. Thank you. Now we conclude Building and Grounds, and we'll go to curriculum.
Good news is, we have one item. So Kelly, come in and enlighten us if we have any energy left to listen to you.
I will talk as fast as you want me to talk.
No, that's okay. Curriculum's always a very important thing, so we do need to spend our time on curriculum, it's an important thing.
Thank you so much. Good evening, board members, Superintendent McManus. We bring to you tonight the Title I Annual Application, and in doing so, share with you that within our Title I Part A budget, there are some optional use of funds. There are some requirements, but the optional are district administration, school improvement interventions for select schools, those are for our CSI and TSI schools, a pre-kindergarten program, and then transportation for foster care. For the 21-22 school year, the district's planning allocation is slightly over $23.7 million. We're required by law to provide equitable services to participating private schools, and so their pro rate of share is shown on the second line. And then we show what's remaining for use for the public schools. This outlines our reservations or our set-asides, optional, or, excuse me, the required ones are noted. So you can see, those are the areas in which we set aside the funds prior to completing allocations for schools. So our total set-asides are about $2.3 million. For the 21-22 school year, we are recommending that there would be 48 Title I schools. This is an increase of five schools from the 2021 school year. We show the breakdown there. All Title I schools would develop and implement a school-wide program. This program allows the funds to be used to improve the academic outcomes of all students, still with the priority being on students at risk of not meeting state standards and state assessments. So when we look at the funding that would be allocated to the schools, again, we have a little over $23 million available for public schools. We'll reserve about $7.2 for those set-asides we outlined, and that would leave $16.312 million to distribute to the schools. There are five additional schools, and the reason for that is because we do have an increase in our allocation for the 21-22 school year. This planning began back in December, looking at our rates of poverty, knowing the impacts of the pandemic, knowing that all of our students have experienced unfinished learning, and our efforts in learning recovery. We did not know about our allocation until the summertime, so again, when we looked at what could we do with this increase, we did look at adding some additional schools to receive the supplemental Title I funding, and that would include Glenn High School, Reynolds High School, Old Richmond, Southeast Middle, and... and that would include Glenn High School, Reynolds High School, Old Richmond, Southeast Middle, and Cash. So with those schools, we do use poverty bands, so they would receive, I'm going to per pupil amount that it's at the lowest, because in rank order, they're, they're in lower rates of poverty. Within this model, our percent poverty would go from 55% as our threshold or our cutoff to then 45% poverty for the inclusion of these three schools for the supplemental funding. Our funding changes from year to year, so in talking with Mrs. McManus and with the principals of these five schools, it is understood that this may be just a one-time opportunity because we do not know what funding could be at another time. Principals understood that, very much look at this to be an investment to help them with their efforts at their school. And the other piece too, is that we were required to use low-income data from the 1920 school year. So I know those are a few school years ago, but we also know within the 2021 school year, the nutrition program was able to provide meals to all students, and so DPI has said we must use data from 1920 because that was the last time there was the most consistent data for our schools. I'm sharing that with you because when we move forward in 2223, I know we're talking 2122, but we're thinking about 2223, we could see some shifts in schools, the impacts of the pandemic, also shifts within our community as well. So with that, we do have a recommendation from the superintendent for us to have 48 schools receiving the supplemental federal funding for the 2122 school year.
Board members have any questions?
So if the allocation decreases, you would adjust, you adjust the percentage requirement, is that how it works?
That is one way to do it, absolutely. So one thing to share is that the number of Title I schools that are identified does not dictate the funding that we receive from DPI.
Okay.
So it's a formula grant, they, we receive the pot of money, so to speak, and then we determine how many hands go in the pot. So when we were to, when we receive our next allocation for 2223, first look at our data to see that, and then to see what is the impact if there was a decrease.
And Kelly, if you remember correctly, we, we also, as a school system, have the ability to see what percentage of these, these schools are funded, just like you had said, with the 45% or whatever, correct?
Yes, thank you for that.
So on the whole spectrum of all of our Title I schools, they are, they are receiving different percentages of funding, correct?
Yes, ma'am, two things, if I may, we are required by law to serve all schools that are 75% low income and higher, and then there is a choice to be able to move down rank order. We do use poverty bands for that reason, we know that schools that have higher percent of low income have different challenges than schools that have lower percents of low income.
So the amount of money, so the amount of money is different at schools depending on the poverty level?
Yes, yes. We call them poverty bands, and we group them together, so the process we use is we actually look at the, the percent, percentage, percent change between all of the schools in rank order, and then we look for natural breaks. So when we look at these five schools, there is very little difference between them. However, when you look above them in rank order, there's a six percentage point difference between Union Cross and the schools below. So that will be the process we look at again to then determine poverty bands. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, so if, if they know the funding's only going to be for one year, and we tend to not hire people if we know we can't sustain their position, what can this money be used for? Can you give me some examples?
Absolutely, so when we spoke with the principals, Dr. Pratt facilitated a meeting with the Title I team and the principals. We shared with them our experiences in federal programs, and Heather Baer, my Title I director, has had this experience as a, as a principal before. We first look at the data of the school, where the areas where support is needed, we look at the root causes. And a lot of times, we then say to make an investment within the school. So it's about, could be about building capacity of teachers, increasing their knowledge, increasing their skills to meet specific needs of students. It can also be supplemental funding, we know we have strategic plan goals to increase our achievement outcomes, specifically in literacy, so it can be a variety of strategies, increasing the media collections with high-interest books for students. It can also be to engage in hands-on, additional hands-on learning, whether it's science labs, whether it is Makerspace areas, depending upon the grade span. So there is a, a large opportunity to use the funds for supplements and not just positions.
Any other questions for Ms. Hill?
All right, thank you very much. That's great news for our schools that'll get that money. So we have one action item is to consider approval of the 202122 Title I application.
Motion, second.
Okay, and I will remind, sorry, I should have remiss in doing this. Board members are myself, Ms. Crowley, Ms. Kaplan, Ms. Mott Singer, and Mr. Bohannon.
And Ms. Parker, I have one question before we, in regards to the vote. Will we be doing any type of educational component around the title of Title I? There's a lot of misunderstanding, misinformation out there, and some schools, you know, see it as
Yes.
You know?
Yeah, I, I agree, that was.
I just think it's really important because, just in a discussion before the meeting with Board Member Jones, there are, there are staff and teachers who don't understand what it means, and I just think it's really important for the families and staff to understand.
Thank you for that question, I apologize for not sharing some of the conversations we had with our principals. We have provided, first, I will say, the principals of these five schools, what they relate to us embrace this opportunity, they see it as an opportunity to serve their communities, their students, and their families. All five of these principals were very positive and understanding the benefits of, of the supplemental funding. Over the weekend, we did share with the principals, we extracted some information with them being first-time schools receiving this funding, as to how can we share and maybe dispel some of the myths? And so our principals do have in hand some talking points that they can share with communities. They, they were aware of today's meeting, waiting to see what some of the questions were for us then to decide what are some next points, next part, next parts in preparation of the meeting in two weeks where you take a vote as the final board. So yes, another component of Title I is parent-family engagement. And so these principals have full support of the Title I team. We differentiate our support for principals in schools, and so we, we will cradle these schools and support them through this transition.
And I think to your point is, is the public perspective. I think there is a stigma, unfortunately, about a child attending a Title I school. I think there is a very negative connotation there, and, and that, that is not a bad thing. I know years ago, whenever we were, we tried to let schools do exactly what you've just done, to add five schools to, to be able to have additional funding to, to enhance their education. And, and it, that's a very hard nut to crack with the public because there's just, for some odd reason, a, a negative connotation about.
They're usually associated with failing schools, and that doesn't have to be the case.
It is not, and it is a funding thing, and I think it's very, it's, to me, it's always interesting when you go to a school and you ask what are you using your Title I funding for, how varied and how much flexibility that schools can have with Title I funding, to be really, really innovative and be very targeted for what their, their school needs and, you know, and how they can use that to best serve. It's not like some other monies that we get from, from, from the state or from federal, which are very, very descriptive, you may only use it, similar to what the Esser funds are right now. There's only certain things that we can do with that money. Title I has some, a lot of flexibility, so it's really, it's a positive money source, and I think the more that we can do to educate the public, to your point, Ms. Crowley, is that it's not a negative thing, if anything, it enhances a school. And it, you know, it'd be, it'd be nice if we could have funds like, to be that flexible with for every school to have. So, you know, and I don't know how we do that. I think that's a good point that you brought up, it's, but, you know, so.
I, I think that we've already begun working with Brent, so we recognize that that could be a next step for us based on conversations here tonight. And part of that messaging is exactly that, a Title I school does not equate to a low-performing school. And many times, a lot of the innovative ideas come from Title I schools because that is when the phenomenal staff there digs into how do we address some specific needs of students? And so yes, we'll continue the partnership with Brent and his team for us to support the schools as they move into this next phase, as the will of the board at next meeting.
And we're, we're, we will, just for timeline, because I know we don't officially vote on it until after open houses and that sort of thing, but we're going to go ahead and send that information out now, right?
Yeah, I think the communication should start soon. Again, these schools are given, being given funding this year and not a complete designation. They're getting funding for a year, supplemental funding, so I think they can start communicating that. I don't think, I think it will pass.
Can't predict.
I think, you know, so I did hear, so today, I think staff members at, at some of the schools, this is, this is new, and I think they, you know, they, they probably need, I hope the principals, you know, in their meetings are explaining to them, but I think also, as, as things get out there and parents are asking them, and, and rightfully so, because for some reason, sometimes that has a, a negative stigma to it. You know, staff members were hoping that parents were not going to try to choose to go some, somewhere else or that they were, you know, didn't want to come to the school. And so I, I think if, if, even though we haven't, won't take official vote on it, if we can talk about that at the, sooner with those community members, I think it will help.
Dr. Hills, isn't it federal expectation that if you receive Title I dollars, then at your school improvement team meetings, you must have conversation with, through that, through that committee with the community?
So yes, state law actually requires that school improvement teams have parent-family representation, and most of the time, the schools do use their school improvement team as that body for input. We also encourage the schools to use either other parent groups, activities that are happening at schools to get input. And that has been a focus that we've had with our Title I program in the past couple of years is how do we gather authentic parent and family input and take, and take it under consideration in their support of their students' outcomes? So it is a requirement, and most schools will work through the school improvement team to get that input for the development of their plans and budgets.
Any other comments or questions? All right, I can't remember now. Did we have a motion, did we have a second? Did we have a second, okay, I thought so. So now, since we remember who the board, who the committee members are, do I have all in favor? Any opposed?
Nope.
All right, thank you, that passes. Policy committee, Ms. Mott Singer.
So we have one topic on for policy that will be being presented by Ms. Jenkins. I would like to say that this policy change was brought forward by a student who has really done a wonderful and excellent job being in touch with myself and with Dionne, and I am excited about having a student bring forward a policy and doing it in such a thoughtful and good, respectful way.
Yes, good evening, board members, Superintendent McManus. I will try to be brief with my comments, but Ms. Mott Singer is exactly right. In July of this year, I was contacted by a student who had some concerns and expressed a desire to see some changes in our student dress code to make it more generally applicable to all students as opposed to appearing to be more heavier referencing female students. And after speaking with Ms. Mott Singer, I thought it was very important to bring it to this meeting in the event that there's some changes that can be made at the, prior to the school year. There is a copy, a Word document in your assembly materials, and I apologize, it's the entire policy, but if you look at pages five and six, you will see, it's a very long policy. But if you look at pages five and six, you will see the section that deals with our student dress code. And then, again, in general, the desire, after speaking with the student, was really to provide more clarity for staff, excuse me, for students in what can and cannot be worn, but then also to make the references more neutral in their application to both male and female students. And so, for example, you'll see that there were previous references to not wearing spaghetti straps or tank tops, and I included some proposed language that would say, instead, all shirts and tops must have straps and/or sleeves. I did receive a suggestion from Ms. Crowley that it, to add additional clarity, maybe to say the straps should be at least two, two, three inches in length, and if the width, excuse me, width. Width. Not like two to three inches in width, just to, again, provide additional layer of clarity for students. And if the, if the, the committee is okay with that, I would certainly recommend adding that. Another example is, instead of referencing underpants or bras, it's changing it to reference undergarments may not be shown or worn as outerwear. And then, as a last example, instead of referencing students cannot wear provocative, revealing attire that exposes cleavage, it would say, the necklines of all attire should be no longer than the top of the underarm. So again, it's just meant to change the, the language to include the same types of prohibited attire, but just referencing it in a more neutral way.
Well, and I think that, I mean, it goes both ways, I mean, males can have some pretty revealing necklines as well, so, you know, I mean, all those really go, and if I remember correctly, whenever we did this, this dress code years ago, we did have an inch requirement, I don't know where that got changed, or maybe it was just the suggestion that principals went by, but we used to have an inch thing that, because I can remember watching them in an office measuring.
Middle school, it was three fingers. Three fingers went, had to be your strap.
Some of this, this bothers me, I mean, not, not, I mean, not, not that, I mean, I think it makes sense that you could, all of this did seem to be a little more focused, where you would think, to probably female students than, because, you know, guys can have on short or shorts, I mean, I, I get the students', you know, thoughts. But just around the whole thing of the neckline to the top of the arm, I don't know, I just, I mean, is that I just think overall, some of that gets really caught up, and then it, it's, you know, maybe you have the dress police at one school and not so much at the other. You know, I, I know that we want appropriate attire for our staffs and our students, but do we really, do we really have to think about, you know, and I know we have to have measurements, but some of those things, to me, are too much.
And also, just like with any, with, relative to the rest of the discipline policy, it's, it's applied differently, right? And so in a building where your priorities may be, like, an administrator's priorities may be, you know, sort of making sure the students are just in the building in a classroom, right? I think that at other schools, it's just applied differently, and so I think that, relative to dress code, just generally, I understand, like Board Member Jones said, that we have to have, that you can't come into school just wearing anything you want to, but at the same time, I think that when we are, when we sort of are pulling students in offices and we're telling them to put their hands by their side, and, like, I, I mean, I think that there's a part of me that's just like, we have to, I think we can sort of take a, a little bit more of a deeper look and to, to sort of say, okay, in 2021, what is, you know, what is sort of the standard so that we're not, you know, having these disproportionate applications of the dress code policy?
I, I do, oh, yes, Ms. Bremer, I'm sorry.
I, I do think that, I know that it's, I'm going to hear a bunch of groans, but having a kid that goes to a Smod school, a standard mode of dress school, a uniform school, has been fantastic because it can be uniformly applied. It does stifle a little creativity in your clothing, in your attire. I love it, though, I absolutely love it, it's defined, you know exactly what to expect.
Now, I have a question. Is it, is this policy only student dress code?
This particular policy is, but we do have
Do we have a staff one?
We do.
Does it need to be changed as well?
I'm looking at that, yes, it's an AR. It is an AR, but, you know, that's something I've actually been looking at for a while, to update that. to update that, because it has not been updated. Aside from the recent updates with regard to mask-wearing, it has not been updated in other areas recently.
Okay, because I, I mean, I think it probably, yeah. Because I think, in all honesty, sometimes we have the same problems across the board with everyone in a school building, so.
Yes. Well, and, and, you know, the, the, I believe the intent of the student in bringing it forward, again, was to provide a little bit more clarity, but I do know that, you know, the policy says students must adhere to their school's dress code, which would include, but is not necessarily limited to what's in this policy. So, there are schools that have Smod, for example, and there are schools that will interpret this policy, not necessarily apply it in an equitable way, but they, they may be more explicit or more specific in their student handbooks. But, you know, of course, there's always, there's still time to address, you know, Ms. Jones' concerns and, and get additional feedback from the community and from students. In fact, if the, if the Policy Committee tonight wants to move forward with, with reviewing this, we would send it out for public comment for seven days, and we also would put this on the agenda at our next Staff Policy Committee, which happens next week. And that's where we could have some additional discussion about your comments tonight, and then ultimately bring it back to you at the second meeting this month for final approval. And if there are any recommended changes or additions based on your feedback tonight, we would certainly discuss that then as well.
So, so my understanding, listening to the board, is that people on this board are probably interested in making sure that things don't feel so petty as to become a hindrance. But also, so, the vote tonight, if somebody wants to make a motion, is really to put it out for public comment, for staff policy, and for the board as a whole to be able to craft it to something they're more comfortable with in two weeks. Is that, so who's on Policy Committee is myself, Andrea Bramer, Deanna Kaplan, Marilyn Parker, and Alex Bohannon.
I, I like that motion, just as you wrote it.
Okay.
Set it.
And any more discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? No. Motion carries.
Thank you, and I would invite, if you, if you all have additional thoughts or feedback, please email me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is announcements. The first announcement is by our Superintendent Tricia McManus. She's going to give us an update on back to school.
Yes, good evening, everyone, and for those that were cold, I don't know if it's just like the sauna up here, but I finally had to take, I hope, is it still cold out there? All righty. You're not freezing up here. I'm thinking either the heater's on, or it's the lights, but.
I am never hot, and I.
You're hot, good.
I shared it.
That is good news. That is good news that everybody's hot. So, so thank you, everyone. This update is really, because our students return in two weeks. Our staff, some schools, I know early in middle college are back now, because they're on a different schedule. Our Inspire 340 teachers are back right now, and next Monday, all of our teachers come back, and then the following Monday, all of our students will be back, so excited, and so this is going to be a, a very quick update for the board. And so, if you were at our board retreat, I mean, our board retreat, if you were at our leadership retreat this summer, you know that our theme for this school, school year is our way forward. We're really trying to move ahead, really focused on our strategic plan. Last year, all my presentations were about our safe return. We are still focused on safety in a big way, but really, it's our way forward. How are we moving forward this school year? So, here is some information about open houses that are coming up next week, and so you can see all the dates and times. We have them from, from high school on Tuesday, to middle schools on Wednesday, elementary on Thursday, and Career Center on Thursday. So, we hope that all of our families will join schools. If they look at their websites, their school websites, they will get more specific data. And then also, we, all adults in schools and any students need to be masked during those open houses. So, a few last things for, for our families and students to think about, know their bus stops, we're going to talk about that in a minute, know your bell times, so you're on time, plan for breakfast and lunch. We have universal for everyone that wants to take advantage of that for lunch, and it's universal breakfast and lunch, right? Both? And then, don't forget your mask. So, here are some other things. Here are the number of students we have enrolled right now. We have 51,635 K to 12 students enrolled as of today. We usually at, during the open house week, get a surge of about 1,000 more, so that could happen next week as folks enroll. We have right now about 2,972 kindergarten students, which is about 800 short of our projections, but we also during next week, expect about 300 more, and really on the first day of school in some of our schools, when parent, people go, oh, school started today, I better get my student, get over there to register. That happens on the first day sometimes as well. So, we hope to have closer to what our projections are. Here are staff vacancies. And so, right now, current classroom teacher, teacher vacancies across our, you know, 80, 82 schools is about 126 vacancies. Certified non-classroom, about 20. Those are like media coordinators and those types of positions that are certified but non-classroom. Classified vacancies, about 79. Bus drivers, about 60, and child nutrition, about 70. So, yes, we do have vacancies across the board that we are continuously working to fill. Our area superintendents are directly working with, with principals. They have, our principals have plans for making sure every student, even if there is an official vacancy on the books, that every student starts the year with a teacher ready to go. And, and so, it might look different, but with some creative solutions, but no student will be without a teacher on day one. All right, our one-to-one program is also rolling out. We have all students in grades three to 12 will receive their device. These will be distributed, some, some schools might be doing that during open house, but in the first two weeks, this entire device, all the devices will be distributed. Three to 12 will be carried home every day, can go back and forth. K to 2, they will all have their own device that stays in the classroom, but every student will have one. And again, it should, within the first two weeks, this will be up and running. Did you want to ask a question now? Go for it.
What did we decide about accountability? Did we, did we make a decision about, for the, the devices, about what happens, or if we're making parents sign something?
We, Kevin, will you update that? I, we don't, we did not agree on a, the, the fees and, for now. It was going to be collecting information, but I do know that Kevin was pleasantly surprised as he walks up on how, what the shape of the ones that were returned this year were in much better shape than, than we were predicting, but did you want to address that?
Sure, quick correction, it's a ratio of one to two in K to.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's not every student?
We're hoping to grow that, but we don't.
Okay. Thank you for that correction.
Yes, our parents will be signing a parent agreement about the rules of the road, basically, for the one-to-one program, and, and with the exception of, you know, we decided not to charge the fee, but there is a charge schedule for total loss and negligent damage. So, we are going to invoice based on those things, that we make assessments, but there's a fee schedule that's in the parent agreement. And all of our schools have those parent agreements, they're sending them home now, and they have to come back with a parent signature before the device is issued to the student.
And so, you said, when you got them back, when you got the laptops back, this time they were, you were, you were pleasantly.
We are redistributing through our fifth grade, eighth grade, and 11th and 12th grade. Those four grade levels are receiving Chromebooks that are used, for lack of a better word, that have been out in the field since COVID shutdown. The other grade levels are receiving brand-new devices out of some of our federal funding, and that's part of our life cycle. So, as Ms. McManus mentioned, my fear was that that loss would be very heavy, and pleasantly surprised that we had a lot more return than what we expected, and our numbers are really high. We've refurbished a lot of those, we had to retire a lot as well that were damaged, but we were able to re, clean those up, get them repaired, and back out in the field for this next year, and we'll be replacing those the following, if there's one more year.
It was an amazing, by the way, I got to go out to see the warehouse with Kevin's team. It was amazing, from the folks that were refurbishing and repairing, it was, I was, they speak another language, those folks, to the people that were, to the people that were programming the, the laptops to go out, to the people loading them in the trucks, I mean, they are all out there. It was an amazing undertaking, Kevin, to you and your team, so thank you. At the same time, Nicolette and her team have been getting all of our new textbooks and curriculum resources out, so schools are going to start the year heavily resourced this year, and now it's just about them getting materials, yeah, into the classrooms. There's, it's, it's a huge process, but people have been working hard all summer, so.
And didn't we approve good cases for all the?
Yes, we did.
So, so that will really help protect them.
Absolutely.
I mean, it is so exciting to start a year with good resources.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, a few other things, I know at our last Board of Education meeting, we did make the decision for masks. As you can see, we're all wearing them this evening, it started Monday, and so, yes, we will be wearing masks as we decided inside facilities and on transportation. Yes.
Quick question about that. I've had a lot of parents ask about their little, little ones, and would, you know, with them being harder to hear with a mask on, or you can't see their mouth, or they can't see the teacher's mouth, they were asking if face shields is a substitute for masks.
Yeah, so, so no, face shields, so face shields are not a substitute, and I know that was part of our discussion la, when we started the school year last year around face shields not being the adequate protection. I see people wear this and a face shield, but, but not just a face shield on their own. But we do have, last year, we gave to many of our classrooms the mask that you could see the student's mouth. I think they were from some of the younger students and some of our EC students, and, I mean, we, we obviously can get more of those. I've seen other masks that I've mentioned, that I would like to get pricing on, that I think our NFL wears them, but they're, they're, they're still very effective, but they're clear, they're not clear, but they're like netted. I think Dr. Cato had one on the other day, and so you can really almost see someone's mouth. It's not completely 100% clear like a clear mask. So, we're, I've asked somebody today, a, a community member that I ran into that works with NFL and other teams, how much those would cost, because he had one on. And so, yes, so we can look at other things like that, because you're right, it's, it's, you even said tonight, as you look at people's faces, we got to look at the eyes, the eyes. You could tell a lot by people like, when you look at their eyes. But you're right, we, we do have access to the clear masks, though, and, so, Lauren, I know that we, as we think about the clear mask, even if we can get more out there, that would be great.
I, I think that would be important, especially for speech.
Yes.
Teachers, and maybe K1, where they're trying to form, form letters and sounds and all that.
Absolutely.
If we can work toward that.
And do all teachers have microphones that they, the technology update? So, all teachers will, because I know it's sometimes harder, but they all will have microphones, is that correct? Excellent.
So, Lauren, do you, because I know that at one point, that there's a lot of like supply chain issue things going on, like, we can, based on the superintendent's comment, like, we can, how feasible, you, we can get our hands on those masks, the kind of masks? Not the NFL ones, but the ones we've done before.
The clear, the clear.
Ironically, is this working, ironically, as much of the supply chain issue we're having with paint and repair parts and all those other things? People have tons of PPE.
Okay.
So, there are people coming out of the woodwork to provide us with donations, which has been outstanding, so we have some of those things coming in. We did do, in the spring of last year, we did do the see-through masks for K through two, every student, and then all of the specialty, speech pathology, EC classes, and so, obviously, that won't touch our kindergartners coming in and new students, so they need to look at that, and, and see if we want to, to take a look, and then the masks that you mentioned as well. But we, we should not, we have not experienced a shortage on any of those supply chain issues.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. So, also, we are, this, you will see in every one of our schools again, reminding our families, if you have any of the symptoms, you know, please take precaution and, and do not come to school. So, that, that is posted, you'll see it around our district. Also, contact tracing will continue. This slide, we discussed two, two weeks ago as well, but contact tracing will continue. We have the district contact tracer still. That's going to be really important as cases, as you know, are on the rise, and with children. And so, we will continue the contact trace and keep parents informed, although, a big part of our discussion two weeks ago was what's on the right, and that is, if you are a close contact in a classroom and you both are masked, our student, unless they are, they become symptomatic or have a positive test, will not need to quarantine. That is a big change in the toolkit, and one that really was part of me bringing that recommendation forward, is so that we can keep students in school. At our next regular meeting, when I give an update, Dr. Oll is going to come on the 24th, I think is our next board meeting, which will be a day after school starts. So, if anyone has specific questions they want to ask him, if we want updates around spread, about what's happening with children, about any data, he is going to come that, that evening. He's already agreed to that. Students in quarantine, this has been coming up, and this is something that we will be talking to our principals about. Again, there is not a one-size-fits-all mandate or anything like that around this, but as we think about students that do have to quarantine, many, if the students are not sick and they're in quarantine, so I'm a positive case, and I'm going to be home for the next two weeks, learning, we want, the goal is this, we want learning to continue. Two weeks is a lot of missed time for a child, especially a younger child, especially with our goal of 90 by 25, and learning how to read, and, and so, we are going to, we, we're going to have our schools talk through, as they come back next week during pre-planning, you know, what are expectations around students still being able to do work? And so, there's many options. You know, posting lessons in Canvas, which a lot of folks do anyway now, and continuing to use Canvas as that site. You can, yes, we still have the cameras in the classroom, and although we're not doing concurrent instruction, you can use those cameras to record any lesson, oops, sorry, you want to, and you can post that. Again, this is not something we're saying, everyone's doing this. These are the things that we can do to still meet the needs of our kids. A teacher could, in, in, during the, and again, it depends on, how many kids do you have that are quarantining? Is it, is it one? And you've got to work with that family to make a decision on how learning will continue for that child. You could use chat features, because we still have Teams and Zoom, and we have Canvas, and you can do chat features, any of those. You can use video check-ins and office hours. So, it's not like, when a child is a positive case and goes home, it's like, see you in two weeks, and, you know, it's, it's, we want learning to continue, and there are many ways we can do that. It is a problem of practice that our teachers and schools will need to work through to make decisions about what this will look like. So, I wanted to put that there, because I think we, we've started getting some questions about the cameras and how they can be used, and this is, these are examples.
I just wanted to definitely support the recording of lessons and posting in Canvas, especially if a teacher knows that they have children that's going to be out longer than a day or two. So, if there's a 14-day quarantine, to me, it becomes obvious that, you know, the instructional leader in the building, principal, CF, whomever, helps that teacher to then make sure lessons are being recorded for students that, you know, have to stay home.
And our, and our teachers, honestly, these are four ideas that we kind of brainstormed. I guarantee, if you put this, this poses problem of practice to teachers, you're going to come up with 25 more other ways to keep learning alive for students that are quarantined. So, absolutely. Transportation, so normal transportation is resuming, as we all know. Families should expect bus assignments this week, and any last-minute changes will be communicated the week of August 16th, the week before students return. Also, although we are on, although our student, you have universal breakfast and lunch, we still, you know, we still need families, because this is where other federal funding and allocations come from, to please fill out those meal applications. And we're excited to see our students. We cannot wait till August 23rd. We are going to have a great school year as, during, as we, what is our, what is our theme? Our way forward. Our way forward, we're going to have a great school year, so we are excited. So, any questions or comments?
Thank you, Ms. McManus.
Thank you.
Just to reiterate the open house schedule, August 17th from 5:00 to 7:00 is for high schools. August 18th, 5:30 to 7:00 PM is for middle schools, and August 19th, 5:00 to 7:00 PM is for elementary schools. We do encourage parents. Okay, yeah, and we encourage you, although we have a very broad schedule for each level, to still contact your school to make sure that these times and dates are applicable. So, definitely still contact your school at possibly your school's website to verify those times. Also, on August 19th, 5:00 to 7:00 PM, the Career Center will have its open house. August the 23rd is, of course, our first day for students. August the 24th, 5:30 PM, of course, is our regular meeting for this upcoming school year. So, those are all the announcements that I have. I do need a motion to go into closed.
So moved.
Second.
If there are no further question or discussion. If there are no further question or discussion, all in favor? Okay, thank you.